Good evening. We'll call the Lakewood Planning Commission regular meeting of April 23, 2025 to order at 7:02. Mr. Medina, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Buckley?
Here.
Commissioner Grably Unis?
Here.
Commissioner Kolkmeier?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Overall?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to say how heartened I am that we have so many folks who have come to see the commission. We often toil in obscurity. So we are glad you are here. And at the risk of getting too far ahead of ourselves, we have reviewed, of course, all of the comments that have been received online, and I am very encouraged that we're going to address the concerns that have been raised. That doesn't mean I want to discourage anyone from providing their comments, but you have been heard and will again tonight. We have two things that we need to accomplish tonight. The first is our second hearing on the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan has been worked on for about two years now with an incredible amount of input. We've had a study session here on it, and we've already had a full public hearing on it. The goal tonight is to hear additional public comment and to make any proposed revisions from commissioners as it relates to that plan. So if you are here for the zoning code rewrite, that will be the second matter that we bring up. And these two things are related but different. The Comprehensive Plan is the advisory document that we are going to be considering this evening. Thank you. And then the zoning ordinance rewrite, this is the first hearing on that. And this is a hearing where we're going to hear your comments. Commissioners are going to ask questions, make comments, and then we will have a subsequent hearing on that on May 21. So there's going to be a full month for us to contemplate that. And then, at that point, if the commission is prepared to move forward with recommendation on the zoning code, it then goes to city council for city councils review. So the first thing we are addressing is the Comprehensive Plan. And with the Comprehensive Plan, we have Roger Waddenell from staff here. I'm not sure if you want to make any preliminary comments, but we very much appreciate the memo that was provided that added great clarity and had a number of proposed edits that we can discuss in just a moment. But Mr. Waddenell?
Yeah. And yeah, Roger Waddenell, Comprehensive Planning Manager, and Matthew Seibert also with Comprehensive Planning is here as well. I'll just be really brief. Unless Planning Commission requests a presentation, we have kind of gone through that in detail. We're really here to address comments that were at the previous meeting. Just wanted to clarify a couple of things. The comments and any of the edits to the Comprehensive Plan are in the memo. Those will, if adopted or whatever form, those will be included in the final document, but thought that that would be the clearest way to address all of the comments. Put them in the memo and then include them, should Planning Commission adopt, in the final document. And again, really, the recommendation from staff is to adopt Comprehensive Plan in Vision Lakewood 2040 with the edits and any other edits that Planning Commission would like to make. So I will really kind of yield to Planning Commission on how much information you would like to have from staff. We certainly can go through the comments or we can listen to discussion. So we're here to facilitate. Thanks.
And thank you. And we will be going to public comment shortly, but simply from my perspective, after having reviewed that document, which is on Lakewood Speaks and is publicly available and has been publicly available, I actually found that of the 14 suggested edits, I was comfortable with all of them. I did have a question about one. That is proposed edit number five. That was a suggestion to add storage in the innovation and technology use. And I think the comp plan already has a reference to storage and warehousing in that section. And it's pretty close to the end, I think, in the comp plan. But I guess I was wondering if that change, which is proposed edit number five, is actually necessary, or is it already covered by the storage and warehousing description later in the comp plan?
Matthew, we'll clarify that.
Matthew Seibert, Comprehensive Planning. I don't think it's absolutely necessary. It was a request at the previous public hearing from a owner of a storage facility on Sim Street. And so we accommodated that request. So it just, it is a little redundant. It says warehouse, storage, and distribution. And so you could argue warehouse and storage are very overlap. But in order just to address that and make it clear for that, for that property owner who did comment at the previous public hearing, we did make that suggested edit.
And I suspected that's where that came from. I myself have some question, though, because that storage isn't the kind of storage we mean when we're talking about an industrial, an innovation and technology use. That's the public retail storage. So I wondered if maybe staff thought that that was maybe not a consistent change to make for that district.
Staff does think it is. And this is actually something getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, but looking forward to the zoning rewrite. So one of the recommendations in the zoning rewrite is to basically combine the LI, which is the light industrial, and the LIRD zones, and just make one LI zone. And the LI zone does allow the kind of storage that you're talking about, the commercial storage. And there's other reasons why those zones are being combined. But this would make it, in the comp plan, a consistent recommendation then to be carried forward into the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of Comprehensive Plan staff on the Comprehensive Plan before we go to public comment? There does not appear to be. So again, and this may be confusing, but the only thing we're taking public comment on right now is the draft in Vision 2040 Comprehensive Plan, the advisory document. And then after we complete that, then we'll talk about the zoning code. So I'm not sure who all has signed up for what, but I'll call names. And if you'd like to make a specific comment about the comp plan, then now is the time. Wendy Parcell? Okay. Boy, Kenneth? I can't make out the last name. Maybe it starts with an A?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on item four on those rezoning.
Okay, great. Eleanor Granis? Patricia Sandoval? Rousha Nowor?
I have more.
Okay. Andy Nowor?
Yeah, I have a comment on three.
Great.
And four, but.
Come on up. And as always, we will ask you to give us your name, either your address or your ward. And we do ask you to stick to three minutes, but you may get questions from commissioners that would draw that a little bit further if you're willing to take them. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Andy Nowor. I live in the Alameda Homes neighborhood in Ward Three. So would like to talk again about the specific zoning ordinance concerns. However, this sort of pertains to that. So thank you to the commission. Thank you to the planners. In the Envision Lakewood Plan, there is a map, I believe it's on page 157, that shows the future land use and the property that is owned by Milestone Apartment developers that is in question about, from everybody else here, or from a lot of the people here, sorry, not everybody, is sort of scooped up in this new purple area that indicates that it will be a neighborhood corridor, which would indicate that it is to be more heavily zoned, possibly multifamily, possibly apartment, possibly retail. So I wanted to make sure that as we talk about possible changes to the crazy zoning change that's in the zoning ordinance, that this would need to be amended as part of that, so that any future discussions of zoning in that, on that specific property, would not be influenced by this non-residential designation and the actual purple currently. So I'm hoping that that could be amended to the orange residential blob rather than the purple blob. So that was it for me.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Erin Robinson? And I see it looks like Ann is item four, Jed is item four, Stephanie Keller? Okay. We'll go back through this whole list again. Sherry Louder? Okay. Lauren Scanlon?
Okay. Hello again. Thank you to the commission and for staff for all your hard work on this. I did send-
If you could just put your name and-
Sorry, yes, thank you. Lauren Scanlon, Iver Neighborhood, Ward One. I did put a comment on the website for this, but I did also send an email to Kristy Ivanov on the 16th. So I just want to make sure that you saw this language. This is regarding enshrining equestrian use into three strategies. We are part of many more strategies, but given that we don't have any appearance on this at all, I think that these are the most important ones to add equestrian use. So those are Strategy 46, Strategy 126, and Strategy 145. This 46 concerns park use. We are park users, active park users. 126 is for transportation and safety access. That, of course, has to do not only with our road safety getting to these parks, but it's part of the Equestrian Protection Act that is currently going through our state system. And then same with 145, safe crossings. Along with that act, we really want to try and make sure that we are safe when crossing these streets to get to the parks and access, since, as many of you know, last year, a horse and rider were struck by a car and a horse was killed. I don't want that for our neighborhood. We would love to be active users, but we'd love to be safe as well. So, thank you.
You have no idea how much we appreciate you providing specific language changes. And I am only speaking for myself at this point, but I found your suggested change on Strategy 46, the access to parks, making it clear there'd be a question access, is a good one. I also thought 145, the safe crossings was. I do have a question for you on 126, though, because 126 is really drafted more relative to modes of transportation.
Yeah, I didn't, hard to say, right? I mean, we're not, many of us are not in the era of horse and wagon. Some people do still drive their horses. I don't know what the use of that is in Lakewood. We are, I did want to be recognized in some way, and perhaps this is not the strategy to do so, as road users as well. So this might, that specific one might not be the strategy, but to acknowledge that we are some kind of cross between pedestrians and vehicles.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Commissioner Buckley?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Scanlon, I just wanted to thank you, like our chairman, for providing that specific language. I'm sure you no doubt remember, two weeks ago, I put you on the spot and asked for some specific improvements. And yeah, that was a lot. So sorry for putting you on the spot, but I can't say how much I appreciate you giving us this specific language. And I, yeah, all your suggestions make sense to me personally. Maybe you can enlighten some of us commissioners. There's been a lot of state legislation that I know all of us up on this body have been keeping track of in the past year, two years regarding land use. One piece of registration that was legislation that maybe affects our work here that was not on my radar was the Equestrian Protection Act that you mentioned.
Yes.
So I would love it if you could educate us on like the bullet points of what that law does.
Yeah. So let me give you the, it's, first of all, it's SB 25-149. There's kind of two main parts. And we have members here from the Jefferson County Horse Council and others who have been much harder at work on this than I have. It mainly concerns creating equestrian zones within a city or municipality, which I'm going to talk about in item four. But it also talks about basically, like, one of the aspects is construct and maintain equestrian road crossings or horse trailer parking necessary to access equestrian trails and install signs that notify the public of the infrastructure, identify locations where equestrian crossings are needed, showing erect road signs with the universal equestrian sign symbol and the words wide and slow, so on and so forth. So there is a kind of equestrian area use as well as specific safety. And for example, I was riding in Adamburg Park two days ago in the crossing, in, within Adamburg Park, and we had to wait as cars just sped right on by, unaware of what our needs were and our access were. And luckily, we had cool horses, but it, and we were very safely far away. But that's, that's a burden that's been on us for a long time.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael, maybe on Newcom Street? Okay. Jake McGrath?
Thank you for having me today. Jake McGrath, 8900 West Kentucky, I believe that's Ward Three. I just moved here. So I'm new to this. I've never done this before. And I had written a little bit more of a speech, what, and I'm not going to go over the full thing, but what is important to me here is some of the language in the master zoning plan. And I wanted to emphasize why it's important to talk about and maybe clarify and specify some of the language to move away from general terms like limited animal keeping and talk more specifically about the role of agriculture and specifically horses and different animals play in Lakewood's and Colorado's heritage. So Colorado's identity, Lakewood's identity, we're the plains, we're the west, it's deeply rooted in agriculture, livestock, horses, other animals. The state was built on horseback, and it's an important part of our heritage. It's an important part of my heritage. I originally, I'm a Colorado native. My family's been here since before Colorado was a state. We have a centennial farm in eastern Colorado, so it's a part of, part of my identity I'm very proud of. I think some of the language, like limited animal keeping, while not law, it's still important to clarify what that actually means in the zoning plan, the master plan, because it clarifies the direction for where we want Lakewood to go. I think that children in Lakewood deserve the same chance that I had growing up. They deserve to learn how to care for a horse, how to tend for an animal, how to grow their food, how to raise chickens and have eggs. And I think that that caring for an animal and learning how to tend for animals and tend for the land instills a particular set of values, a particular set of environmental stewardship, and a particular set of responsibility that the schools and phones and screens really can't teach. I think by explicitly saying in our master plan, what we're doing is putting our values into writing. I think I speak for at least a lot of people in this room that the west agriculture and, and sort of the spirit of the plains, it reflects a lot of the people that live in Lakewood. So I think it's important that we're not just preserving the land, we're preserving the meaning that so many of us hold dearly here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know if there's questions. I don't, this is kind of putting you on the spot. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the whole Comprehensive Plan, if there was a place that you thought might be appropriate to amplify these issues. We have a section on preservation of our historic and cultural resources. We talk about environmental stewardship and ecosystem health and-
Yeah, I think that they're good. I think the particular part that I, that didn't take issue with, but could have more is, and I wish I had a page number, way to talk specifically about limited animal keeping and horticulture and agricultural in the urban environment. It was towards the end. I think that perhaps expanding there more about what that actually means and, and what types of animals and what types of agriculture Lakewood wants to promote as part of its 2040 vision.
Okay. So we do have, in the land use is generally allowed, includes urban agriculture, horticulture, and limited animal keeping. What would, in your view, expand that term or further define limited animal keeping that would make you feel more comfortable?
Yeah, I think adding specific, specific language about being able to keep horses, sheeps, goats, things that are explicitly laid out in the zoning document currently, as well as chickens, eggs. I think that, I know that it is part of the zoning document, but I do think that explicitly laying out what animals are allowed to be kept, not only would give some people an opportunity to, to, to sort of understand what animals could be kept from a master, from a master planning perspective, but could also just show that that's an important part of, of our culture and what we have in the zoning language currently, and that we want that to be a part of the plan moving forward, because it is vague and it does leave a lot of interpretation about what, what could be the direction of that moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. That was Jake. Yes?
Yes.
Samantha?
Yes. So I am Samantha Akmo. I'm also at 8900 West Kentucky Avenue. And I'm just going to kind of piggyback off of what Jake was saying. I'm coming from living in Lakewood my whole life, and I was a part of Westerners growing up. I always wanted to have like the little, little backyard farm, being able to have a horse, have goats, have chickens. And I have had the white horse in this picture for the past 16 years. And when we bought this house recently, the sole reason, one of the sole reasons we purchased it was because we could have horses in the backyard. And so I think kind of piggybacking off of that limited animal keeping terminology, we just want to make it more explicit so that people can't find loopholes and ways to come in and be like, well, you know, your horse attracted one too many flies, and now we can take away your horse. We want it so there's specific things of, yes, you can have a horse in your backyard. Yes, you can have that goat. Yes, you can have those chickens if you want to. And just expand off of the vague language, because it is there. But again, we want to clarify kind of exactly what that means and how that fits into myself, that vision, the vision, I think, of a lot of people here. And so we just want to make sure that we can continue carrying on with what we all grew up with and what we have built our homes to be and around the animals that we love, because the animals are our family. And so we want to make sure we protect our family.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Rebecca Bazir?
Zoning.
Zoning. Neil, you're on zoning. Okay. Denise Stubber? Stubberer? Okay. Oh, Brett, where'd he go? Peglieri? There. There.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Director Brett Paglieri. I represent this area on the RTD Board of Directors, District M, and I am in Ward 2. I'm here tonight to thank you all for the hard work that you've done on this comprehensive plan and envision Lakewood 2040. And also to start our conversation and being a bridge towards working more closely with RTD in the future, because what you guys are doing is very cool, and we support you, and we, there's a lot of things that the agency is doing that is in alignment with the comprehensive plan. I'll highlight a few things and speak a little bit for myself as well. Two points I wanted to highlight, and I have language related to Page 161, specifically the Denver West Community Hub, but I'll start with the Oak Station Community Hub. Specifically, RTD has a parking lot there, and I wanted to just briefly inform you all that we are currently going through some research into how to develop our parking lots more effectively into mixed use so people can live by the stations, because that's often the most convenient place to use transit is when you live right next to the station. And so I, I don't know if we've ever identified that particular parking lot north of the Oak Station, but it is within your Oak Station Community Hub, so I appreciate that. We do own land, about 17 acres, next to the Oak Station Community Hub, which we call Quail Street Site, and it is in your light zoning, and I do recommend keeping it light zoning for future flexibility of use. So appreciate that as well. And then the other comment I wanted to make quickly was the Denver West Community Hub. I have suggestion for language change, a little bit of an addition. So the final sentence of Page 161 reads, "The city and major stakeholders and property owners should work with RTD to evaluate opportunities to better connect Denver," excuse me, "better connect the Denver West Hub to nearby rail stations via public transit and/or shuttles." I recommend adding the language, "nearby light rail stations via a pedestrian crossing of Sixth Avenue, public transit and/or shuttles."
One more time, a little more slowly.
Sorry.
So it would be, "Connect the Denver West Hub to nearby light rail stations."
Via a pedestrian crossing of Sixth Avenue, public, comma, public transit and/or shuttles. That's my recommendation for language. Another option for language could be pedestrian access, if you don't, aren't comfortable with the implications of a crossing. And the reason this is important, and I can wrap up quickly, I apologize, is for unlocking ridership in the area, connecting a community that is isolated from a rail station that could benefit. There are people who want to ride in communities around stations that face barriers, whether that barrier is poor lighting, poor security, poor safety, or just lack of a sidewalk. And so that's why it's important, when we're talking about making community hubs that are based around transit, to make sure that you can walk to the station, along with getting nearby other forms of transportation. Yeah, thank you.
That is very helpful. Commissioner Gribbionis, your light is working.
I'm glad it's finally working. Thank you for those comments. I guess a question I have is, does RTD have any documentation available for any potential barriers that they see across Lakewood beyond just these specific things, perhaps like a map or something that staff could access?
So part of me coming tonight is because I recognized in my own capacity a little bit of a discrepancy between RTD and the, the planning committees. I represent Edgewater, Golden, Wheat Ridge, and majority of Lakewood, and I've heard that before, that there is no real map to see what are we going to do with the land that we own specifically, if that was your question.
I guess the question kind of more specifically is if RTD has any type of map or diagram that shows some of these large pedestrian roadblocks, basically. I know you're talking about pedestrian access over Sixth, but as we're going through this comp, plan process, having, I guess, an analysis from RTD, I think would be a benefit for further review.
I would love to see that as well. I do not believe that I'm aware of one. I will follow up, and I'm happy to send the, all you Commissioners an email with anything I find, because that would be awesome. And this is an issue across RTD's district and Lakewood as well, whether that's, you know, bike crossings north to south, crossing Sixth Avenue, or getting to the Red Rocks Community College Station, so.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Sarah Lindback?
Next section.
Next one. Mike Jordan?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
I'm not really familiar with the, Mike Jordan, I live off of 2555 South Kipling Street. We're, I'm not really familiar with the comprehensive plan completely, but we're going through a rezon process, and the comprehensive plan kind of will, could possibly interfere with long-term development. My property's right on basically Kipling and Morrison, and we're just north of the power, the car wash right there, and around us is all MGS zoned. And to the north, it's more residential. We are zoned R143 still. And I'm hoping that we can work with you guys and get this passed to an MGS zoning in the future here soon. It's been used for commercial for the last 48 years, and I'm the one who is willing to step up and make it legal. We also have a much improved architectural plans here and engineering plans, and so we will be here soon representing that as well. So I just look forward to working with you guys on this, and I can't wait to show you our plans for the future, you know, that as well. So that's all I have in regards to the comprehensive plan. But I think we can work together to come up with something that will work good for Lakewood, the community, and the city in general, and not to mention make the area beautified, beautiful, if you will.
Great.
So we're going to be, speaking of equestrian trails, we're going to actually be putting one in front of the property running north to south. So that's going to be a benefit to everyone here, it sounds like, so, or almost everyone, so. We look forward to working with you guys on that. Thank you.
Are there any questions from Commissioners? Thank you so much. Andrew Woods? Sean Fagola? Flag? Okay. Candace Taylor? Okay. Brennan Williams? All right. Paul Ditson?
Good evening. Paul Ditson, Ward 1, and a member of the Advisory Group Committee. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and said I would be better prepared this time around. I was, in, in the respect of being able to get some comments in this time, which I won't belabor, but I did want to, again, extend gratitude as a advisory group member, gratitude to the staff and all of the volunteers and everybody that put some effort into developing this plan. I have to admit that I am embarrassed that, being a horse owner myself, I don't keep it in, I don't keep my horse in Lakewood, but stable it, was stapling it in Arbata, she's now up in Cheyenne where rates are a bit more agreeable, and she's retired anyway, she's out to pasture. But anyway, I'm rather embarrassed to, to admit that this escaped my attention. I think we did have some conversation in the, in the meetings regarding horsekeeping and equestrian access and stuff. I don't think that was captured very faithfully from those comments, and I missed the, the opportunity personally to, to catch that, because my focus was on generally large lot accommodations and stuff, and not specifically to equestrian use. So I might suggest, if it hasn't already been, Strategy 145, safe crossings, maybe we put some reference to equestrian crossings in that, and Strategy 46, parks in open space, likewise add some language regarding equestrian use. My other comment is, again, hearkening to some of my comments online, the disparity between the future land use map and the zoning ordinance. I think those really need to be carefully reviewed, and the, the land use map, since it is potentially in the future going to continue driving decisions when it comes to planning and zoning and stuff, that that be as accurate as possible right now before this is approved. So if we could get those to sync up. And I'll just put in a plug for Iber Neighborhood Association's annual meeting is tomorrow at 6:00 PM, St. Paul's Church at 10th and Garrison. And I might say as a, as a footnote, too, that the Iber Board is fully endorsing the concerns of the equestrian community in both the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners?
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor Granis? Okay. I believe those are all the names that I have. Is there anyone else here who would like to make a comment as it relates to the comprehensive plan? Yeah, please come up.
Lee Peters, Ward 2. I signed up to talk about zoning, but on the comprehensive plan, I just wanted to say, in my opinion, you need another goal for the equestrians. Maybe the other agricultural issues, I'm not as familiar, but that's what I would recommend, and I would volunteer to work with Lauren and whoever else is interested to come up with language if it would be helpful.
Okay. Any questions?
And I submitted comments, and City Council has them, too.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll ask folks to speak more loudly into that. Mr. Clerk? Hang on, folks. Hang on, folks, just a second.
Yep, I'm, I'm turning it up a little bit. Yep, no problem.
Okay. Okay. Selena Williams? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Selena Williams, and I moved to Lakewood in 1988. I moved here because of the ability to have agricultural use of my land with farm animals, horses, goats, sheep, chickens, whatever I chose to have. I am fortunate that I live in R1, and I know that's not the only area that has that ability, but I am listening to people talk a lot about horses, which is wonderful, but there are other uses that are agricultural that need to be considered, in my opinion. A lot of us have these other animals and needs to have these on our property and moved here for that purpose, and I would like to see that I don't lose my R1. That is the whole reason I bought the property, and it is a big selling point. It is unique. I have irrigation water, and I have a horse barn and a horse corral, and I have extensive gardens. I live on a half an acre. And I think that's part of who Lakewood is as a community. It's not just building apartments for housing and development, and I would hate to see that we move away from that altogether. And my fear is that with these rezonings and so forth, these are just a step in another direction that a lot of us don't want to go, and we don't want to take the property loss either. You know, if my property didn't have the abilities that it had, it would make it substantially less for resale. My property's in very high demand, and that should say something to you also. There's a demand for, for what I have, and we should be preserving that and encouraging that. And that, that's all I wanted to say on that.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Colleen Iman?
Good evening. I'm Colleen Iman, and I am Ward 3, 915 South Field Street, and I agree with everything that's been said so far, as far as the agricultural and equestrian. We have property over here at 915 South Field Street, and I have to agree that it was kind of startling, it kind of got by me, too, that all of these discussions were going on. So I apologize that I haven't been paying attention. But I would like to be more involved in the detailing and getting more specific information on how these, how all this information is going to look, how it's going to be formed, and certainly what it means for us in the future. So I was really surprised that this even came up, because this is part of Lakewood. I've been in Lakewood all my life. I was born, raised here, raised my family here. I'm almost 60, I'm not quite there yet, so I've been here and seen it, and I wanted to raise my kids here because of this specific environment that we have. I know a lot of good things have happened in Lakewood, and that's kind of why I've never been to a City Council meeting from this side of things. So I'm here tonight because it is a critical piece of our community. It is our community, and I hope that whoever is making, taking on these decisions, these big decisions, realize how it is impacting those of us that have been here for a long time. So however I can get involved to impact some of those changes, I would like to get involved. I did, my City Councilman did send me the signup stuff, so if there's another way we can get the information out, that'd be helpful. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions from Commissioners?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
No, just a comment. My Commissioner got back to me really quick, so I really appreciated his responsiveness.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Celia Greenman. I'm in Ward 2. My comment is on tree canopy. This appears a couple of times in the comprehensive plan. And what I see about improving the tree canopy is that trees are going to be planted in certain areas. What I would like to see as an underline or an addition to the comprehensive plan is that there is adherence to the existing tree preservation ordinance, and that means that when developments come before the Planning Department and maybe the Planning Commission, that the developments are planned with a, an idea of preserving the existing trees on site. We have certain developments in progress where... We have certain developments in progress where mature trees are going to be taken down. If there were more plan, planning in the advanced stages, then perhaps there could be a back and forth between the planning staff and the developer about how best to preserve trees. This is in our best interest. It's in the tree's best interest. It's in the environment's best interest to preserve habitat. We have mature trees. We're taking them down, and we're replacing them with small trees. And that's not a one-to-one substitute. I would just like to see that the mature trees are given all of the attention as far as preservation as possible. This appears in the sustainability section, and I think in the environment section as well.
Thank you. Yeah, actually, I was just going to ask you because tree canopy appears 27 times in this comprehensive plan, so it's pretty thoroughly referenced here. Is there something that you think still needs to be added?
Yes, because I don't see anything about preservation. I just see that you're planting trees.
Air pollution prevention.
And I don't know really, I haven't investigated how tree canopy is calculated, but if you're just taking the new tree and that canopy as equal to a mature tree, that's not a fair comparison.
Thank you. Yes, on the comprehensive plan?
Hi, Leanne Thompson from Ward 4. And it might be in there. I haven't looked at the comprehensive plan, but it bothers me that all of the new buildings that are being put up do not have any green space between them and the street. And that may be in the new plan, but we definitely have to have more grassy areas when we're driving down the streets. Okay, might be there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? I don't think so. Still on the comprehensive plan, any further comments? Yes.
Hi, I'm Terri Johnson. I have no idea what ward I'm in. I'm off of Kipling and Morrison. And I know this has been touched on a lot for the equestrian and agriculture and all of that already. However, I have looked through some of the comprehensive plan already and the ordinance changes. And some of the things that maybe are missing, from what I'm seeing online at least, are there is still like regulations of how many horses and goats and how much space you need for them and all of that. However, there are some changes to poultry and birds and livestock that diminish that from what it is currently, or does not, or reduce, I guess. Maybe it doesn't line it out all the way.
You may be talking about the zoning ordinance rather than the comp plan.
Possibly, yes. I'm not sure. It has to do with like the size of property, which is not necessarily completely laid out, in my opinion. I mean, there's stuff that says we wouldn't be able to have roosters anymore or male goats because that was in the previous ordinance, which now is not outlined at all in the new one. It says that it would be four to six per any property, and that our acre property would be basically the same as an R6 property currently. I don't know if that's, maybe I'm seeing it incorrectly, but I looked at the same ordinances from currently as the new one, and it does not state anywhere near the same information on it. It's very diminished. So if maybe that can get looked into a little bit or expanded upon, I guess.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else with comments for the comprehensive plan? Thank you. With that, we're going to close the public comment section on the comprehensive plan, and this is obviously a plan that we all have been living with for quite some time. There are some things that were raised in public comment that we may want to get a staff reaction to. And I guess the first place I would suggest is one of the comments we got was on the two strategies related to equestrian access, 46 and 145, which my impression is those are pretty reasonable and I would support. But I'm curious on those two and on Strategy 126, what reaction, if any, staff has?
Speak for staff. I see support for the proposed changes in Strategy 46 as well as 145. They seem very reasonable and are good additions to those strategies. I just wanted to comment a little bit on Strategy 126. Continue to encourage safety and access for all modes of transportation users are considered with future transportation improvements. The proposed edit is including equestrians. I would suggest that, I think pedestrians and bicycles and other modes should be acknowledged as well if pedestrians are included, or leave it as it is and it's implied. But I understand that there's a concern to make sure equestrians are addressed, so possibly just adding pedestrians, bicycles, and all modes would address that issue.
Do you think that that would be comprehensive enough, that if the edit was to add pedestrians, bicycles, and equestrian uses?
And all, maybe all modes, including equestrian?
All modes.
Uses, I think that would be fine. The other two are very, very much acceptable.
The other thing in the section that talks about, in the comp plan, where we talk about limited animal, shoot, what's the word? I don't know if it's use or keeping, keeping limited animals. Is there a way to provide a little more? Would that be an appropriate place to maybe say such as, but not, you know, including, but not limited to? Horses, goats, chickens? Is that, or?
Certainly, another opportunity is to add it to the glossary. What is the exact definition there?
So commissioners, yes, we have a glossary at the end of the, at the end of the comp plan. It doesn't list all of the uses, but it does highlight some of the ones where there might be some confusion. And I think that would be an opportunity to, to add that explanation of what limited animal keeping includes, which, which it does include, the things that were mentioned, livestock, horses, chickens. And without getting into too specific of what the size of the parcel is that you're allowed and how many square feet you need, that's really a purview of zoning. But I don't think, I don't think it's harmful to add it to a glossary and specify that that does include horses and other livestock subject to zoning limitations. I think that's very acceptable.
So I guess, and I don't know if other commissioners have a feeling on this, but I am wondering if we could put you on the spot to craft that definition while we go on to talk about other things, and perhaps that could be considered as an amendment. But I don't think there's a limited animal definition currently, right?
There, the definition in the zoning refers to animals, and then it refers to livestock. So there's large animals and small animals.
Right. But in the comp plan glossary?
There is none now.
Okay.
I would suggest on page 161, what is, what was that? 168?
166 is the land uses generally.
Okay, 160, I'm sorry, 166, urban agriculture, horticulture, and limited animal keeping, that would be a good location to put, to include, trying to think of the language, horses, other livestock, or whatever the acceptable language the planning commissioner lands on. But I think that would be a good place to put it in the comprehensive plan to expand upon that. Other land uses allowed, it's urban agriculture, horticulture, and limited animal keeping, just add horses, other livestock, or whatever detailed language we could work on in the next few minutes.
Okay.
If that's acceptable.
The suggestion by RTD to add on page 161 a reference to pedestrian access seems like a reasonable request to me, but...
I have a little background on that one.
Okay.
When the, when the West Line was built, developed, there was actually a design for pedestrian overpass that was value engineered out of the project. So somewhere in RTD's files, there is a design of a pedestrian bridge. So that was something that was thought early on in the process, and it was, for whatever reason, not included. So I think there's been a lot of study done for that, and I think that's a very reasonable inclusion.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Waddell? In your safety studies that you've done, I know you're working on West Colfax now, have you looked at different areas in the city that are bottlenecked or roadblocked from getting to access, getting access to the, to mass transit? Has that been something you all have looked at?
I think the area that we looked at, and I think that's most significant, is West Colfax. Certainly, the segment where the safety project is between Sheridan and Teller is very significant. The other area that actually we're taking a look at is the area, the segment between Kipling and Oak, no, Kipling and Quail, related to the Oak Street Station. So that would probably be next on a list of needs in terms of access to light rail. Trying, you know, getting from businesses on the north side of Colfax where there is more, there's additional residential development to the south side. So I would see that as probably the next in line as a significant area in need to work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yeah, Mr. Waddell, I'm aware that in the past, city staff and even Lakewood Advisory Commission has done some work on prioritizing sidewalk gaps and where to fill those. And of course, there's also a bike plan update that I know is coming to city council here in another month or two that's pretty comprehensive. So I was wondering if maybe in either of those things or some other transportation study, maybe Lakewood has something like the map that Director Pagliari mentioned, like, you know, he would look into if, if RTD has, that like really identifies, not just like the, you know, bicycle and pedestrian access gaps, but does so with specific respect to things like the light rail stations and bus stops. If, you know, maybe in all our studies, that's something we do have in the city?
I know the Public Works Department does have an analysis of missing links, sidewalks, and looking to prioritize. And certainly, the, what's called the last mile connection to light rail are really important, and I know RTD has done some work on that. That, I think that could take a closer look in how to best connect. But there has, and the bicycle plan for sure has, will identify important priorities for the next investments in bicycle, either bicycle lanes or other investments.
Yeah. Yeah, so yeah, I'm definitely quite aware that we're prioritizing those announcements. I guess just, if there's anything in those resources and documents to develop that ties it in specifically to especially bus stops, right? So many bus stops are overlooked. You know, you don't have to search very far to find a bus stop that's just a patch of dirt next to a ditch on the side of the road, right? So we probably do better than that, and it might be that we have a resource much like, yeah, Director Pagliari says he's searching for. So I just appreciate staff looking into that further.
Yes, definitely will. Thank you.
Actually, we've closed the public comment on the comp plan. Any other questions of staff as it relates to the comp plan before we take some motions on potential edits? Does not appear to be. If there are other commissioners that want to make particular amendments, you can. I'm going to go ahead and, and start with what I hope are easy ones. So a memo was prepared and was included in our packet and available online that is from the comprehensive plan staff dated April 23, 2025. That document has 14 specific edits. I would move that the commission approve all 14 of those edits as specifically detailed in the staff's memo.
Second.
And there's a second. Is there any discussion? See, no discussion. I think Mr. Bedina, we'll go ahead and open up the vote on that. Do you?
Is the voting machine working for you?
I, it is. I have not yet shown it.
Okay.
Display votes. There we are. That passes unanimously with six votes. The second amendment I would propose is the two changes to Strategy 46 and Strategy 145 that regard equestrian access. I'm wondering if the easiest way to do this, I move that, Strategy 46, in the final sentence, we add after events and before and, we insert and equestrian. And in Strategy 45, after install and before crossing, we insert pedestrian, cyclist, and Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. You trying to hit your button? Oh, okay. If there's no discussion, then we will go ahead and vote. And that passes six to zero as well. I would certainly entertain any other consideration from a commissioner on the suggestion related to 126. Commissioner Buckley?
I move, I apologize, I'm going to kind of do this a bit on the fly. I move that we edit the language of Strategy 126 to read, continue to ensure that the safety and access needs for all modes of transportation users are considered with future transportation improvements, comma, including pedestrians, cyclists, and equestrians.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair. My only question on this proposed language amendment is, is it important for us to clarify that we're including but not limiting to these particular things, or do we feel that this existing language accounts for that?
Commissioner Buckley?
I'm happy to amend my motion to say including but not limited to pedestrians, cyclists, and equestrians.
We will deem that under our rules to be a friendly amendment. Is that all right with the second?
Yes.
So the revised motion is before us. Any further discussion? We will open the voting. And that passes six to zero. I want to make sure, staff, you are getting, Mr. Waddell? Great. Clear that. The next one was, I believe, the discussion on page 126. The next one was, I believe, the discussion on page 166 where we talk about limited animals. And I would move that we add, including but not limited to, horses and other livestock. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Can I ask a clarification on that?
Please.
So this is on page 166, but that language appears for all of the, that same language appears for all of the land use categories. So just to clarify that you're making the suggestion for all of the land use categories where that is mentioned.
Perhaps, but perhaps not. Let me go to that page, and I thought we were in the land uses generally. Oh, I'm sorry. So perhaps I should, it would be more appropriate to make that in addition to the specific bullet, urban agriculture, horticulture, and limited animal keeping?
Correct, but not just on page 166, but on all of the land use categories where that is listed, which is all of them.
Is that true of all of the other bullets under that same heading?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Neill.
So at one point, it was brought up to add this to the glossary, so possibly limited animal keeping, I don't know, agriculture, or something here in the land use element could be added to the glossary so that it includes horses and other livestock, or...
I think that is a way we could do it. My recollection was that the suggestion, that was the first suggestion, and a follow-on suggestion was that maybe it'd be better to put it in the land uses generally?
The glossary is actually in the zoning.
Oh.
But I think if you look under, again, page 166, land use is generally allowed, just I'll read the, the following land uses are typically allowed in each future land use category, including community corridors and future land use. So I think if it is included on page 166 under urban agriculture, horticulture, and limited animal keeping, and then add of horses and other livestock, that should cover it.
Commissioner Overall.
So I just want to make sure I'm tracking. Essentially, this component of land use is generally allowed is like the glossary for the comp plan.
Yes.
Thank you.
And there's a more detailed one. Well, there is, and yes, there's an additional one in zoning, but this is the Comprehensive Plan, yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to further clarify this, does that mean that we are not adding this to every section, or we are only adding it to this one section?
From my understanding, you're adding it to this section with, that should cover it for other sections.
To follow up, then, I just want to clarify, on page 166, assuming I'm looking at the correct version of this, that is under community corridors, future land use category. Is that different from the other sections?
Actually, correction, you're correct. It should be added under, on page 164, because it's the same language. And I don't know if there's additional, but wherever that shows up in that section, I'm stand corrected, that would be under each, where it shows up on 166, I believe on 164, that that would be amended as well.
I see it also on 159.
And see, in any, yeah, 159.
So I guess my question is, then, is it necessary for us to include that in every single section of this? Or is it more important for us to clarify what we mean when we talk about urban agriculture, horticulture, and limited animal keeping? Is it important that we update every single section of land use? Or is there a way for us to say, what we mean by limited animal keeping is the opportunity to have horses, livestock, et cetera, instead of adding that to every single section? I think it would allow us to be more flexible in how we approach this as a community over many years, both for opportunities for growth, as well as opportunities to ensure that folks who want to be able to have livestock continue to have it. So I guess my question is more of a logistics, does it make sense for us to add it on every single one of these? Or is it a better approach to clarify what that means somewhere else in the Comprehensive Plan?
Yes.
I'm a little bit famous for asking really weird questions, so please...
No, that's, I mean, one way to handle it is the way we discussed. We'd have to take a look at the best location to handle it. Where's it, under where? You'd have to add, yeah, you'd have the Matthew suggestion, you'd add another definition in the glossary. That would be the other way. Currently, there isn't one. One could be crafted here.
Okay. I have a, I think I have an alternative suggestion. Commissioner Buckley, will you take back your second?
I will.
And I will withdraw my motion. I'm wondering if the commission would be comfortable if we directed staff to make the change that we're suggesting wherever applicable and appropriate, rather than it be a specific citation. Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, I, thank you, Chair. I appreciate that, and I am very supportive of asking staff to think through, like, how to best approach that.
Yeah.
I think my main, I don't want to call it a concern, because it's not really a concern. I just want us to be really aware of including language around specific animals in every single one of our sections here. It feels to me like it would be better for us to say, this is generally how it is approached, versus spelling out in our vision document, right? Again, this is not a legal document, right? This is a vision document, how we want to approach this. That feels to me like a more dynamic approach to this, and I think it would be helpful, both for us as a commission, but also, I would hope, be reflective of what a lot of members of the public have come here to share with us tonight.
I think, I think that's a reasonable suggestion, rather than try to craft something on the fly here, which we're trying to do. In listening to the comments from the public comment, I think we have a clear understanding of what the intent is. And the intent is to allow, have the Comprehensive Plan, again, zoning is, will be the rules, but have the Comprehensive Plan support the keeping of horses and additional domestic animals, however we define them. We can include sheep and others. We could take a little time to craft that, but certainly, staff has a clear understanding of the importance of this issue and the need to address it in the Comprehensive Plan. So that would be another approach to direct, to get direction from planning commissioners to do that.
Okay. Commissioner Buckley?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, the Comprehensive Plan, in fact, does have a glossary. So I think that someone, someone from staff said it does, and then someone said it doesn't. Just to clarify the facts, I'm looking at it now, there is a glossary. So I think I would be supportive of adding a definition of what urban agriculture, horticulture, and limited animal keeping means, so that when that phrase appears, like, we're talking about page 166, that's just under one of the eight, you know, envisioned future land use categories. That language is for things that are generally applicable everywhere, and so it's repeated eight times in all eight future land use categories. So just saying what that means in the glossary is a neat, concise way of saying what we mean eight different times when we say it. And then we're talking about equestrians and animal keeping and agriculture in eight different places by reference, which will probably make a lot of folks here more comfortable. And then just also, I very much agree with Commissioner Williams' suggestion that I think staff could take a stab at incorporating into the best place in this document, in addition to the glossary, you know, the spirit of the comments we've heard tonight.
Would commissioners be comfortable with a motion that directs staff to craft and add a definition of limited animal keeping consistent with the comments we have received? Or do you want to see that language before we would entertain a motion on the plan itself? I'm getting a sense we could, go ahead, Commissioner Buckley.
Yeah, I guess I just want to feel out to other members of the commission, what's the, what's the speed with which we need to complete the comp plan? You know, we know that in about a month, we'll be back in this room for a second hearing on the zoning. You know, is it, is it okay to take a look at the comp plan that night as well? I, myself, don't see reasons why it wouldn't be, and, you know, I think a great way to show the community that we're listening to their concerns is that the community sees with their own eyes that they're in the document.
Commissioner O'Neill.
I agree with Commissioner Buckley.
I would take a different tact. I think on what is essentially a technical matter, my preference would be to see if we have support for these amendments and the comp plan, rather than delaying it another month. It's not just us, it is the community that's waiting for this and City Council. Let me try, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Buckley and Commissioner O'Neill. I do understand the importance of ensuring that we are addressing this and showing our community that we are addressing it appropriately. I, I mean, my sort of personal opinion on this is that we do account for this already in, for the ability to use your land for agriculture, horses, equestrian, cows, et cetera. I believe that is represented in this when we say urban agriculture, horticulture, and limited animal keeping already. However, I also recognize that many members of the community want to make sure that we are clarifying that more. I do believe that that, I agree with the Chair that this is probably, I mean, if we're adding it to the glossary, it seems that we could invite, I feel we could probably pass it today and then have a technical change to the glossary to further define what we mean, but we have a very extensive public record here of us discussing what that means, and I do believe that staff has heard that. And so I would, I would support us not holding up the plan for a whole nother month to add an additional definition to the glossary if the rest of the commission feels that that's appropriate. But I'm not, you know, going to stake my commissionhood on that by any means.
I will make a motion that the commission is directing staff to include an additional glossary definition of limited animal keeping consistent with what has been presented by public testimony this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll start voting. And that passes six to zero. Thank you. On, I would move that on page 161 of the document, having to do with the Oak Street Station, we include the words pedestrian access, as suggested by RTD. Is there a second?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Does staff feel you have enough guidance on that with the motion?
Yes.
And with that, I would ask the members to vote. And that passes six to zero. All right. I only have two more myself, and they're small ones, I would argue, but we did have public comment in the previous meeting, I think from Reverend Hensley and others, that wanted a little more clarity on permanent supportive services related to housing. So I would move that in Goal 20, Strategy 124, after the phrase and effective connections to, we insert temporary, transitional, and permanent, all of those modify housing. So that sentence would read, make homelessness rare, brief, and singular for any households experience through early, efficient, and effective connections to, new words, temporary, transitional, and permanent, going back to the existing housing, health, income, and supportive services. Is there a second?
A point of order.
Sure.
Which goal and strategy did you reference?
Goal 20, Strategy 124, unless I got the wrong one.
Okay, and to clarify, I'm pretty sure Strategy 124 appears for multiple goals, so like all the other strategies, we would be amending this language, this strategy, for all goals where it is applicable, correct?
Correct.
Okay, it's not just limited to Goal 20. So basically, we're remending Strategy 124 everywhere, Strategy 124 appears.
Good clarification.
All right, since that is what you intend, I will second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Overall.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Why is, why is it that you're suggesting this amendment?
Thank you. So we have received comments that there are a number of things in the Comprehensive Plan that are very supportive of new and dynamic housing alternatives, especially to deal with chronic homelessness. But there wasn't quite clarity about whether that was just shelter or supportive services. And the City Council has been working, the Housing Commission has been working towards proposals that relate to permanent supportive services as well as housing. And so it's been articulated by the community that that's a, an aspect that should be highlighted. It's not just a roof, but supportive services that keep people housed. Commissioner Overall.
So the three words, the amendments, would pertain to supportive services as well?
Yeah, I believe that, yeah, my intent is that it's modifying housing, health, income, and supportive services.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please vote. All those opposed, you can do so as well. And that passes six to zero. Thank you very much. The last one I have is Goal 19, and to Commissioner Buckley's good point, Strategy 112, wherever it appears, I would suggest that after organizations and before the period, additional words are added, especially focused on permanent supportive services. And this is, I think, just another, I'll just, by way of explanation, it's another place where housing and supportive services appears, so I think this is really for consistency. So again, wherever Strategy 112 appears, after organization and before the period, add especially focused on permanent supportive services. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussions? Any discussions? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll open up the voting. And that passes six to zero. All right, commissioners, it is likely I've forgotten something, and you all may have other things, but this is the opportunity to make any further changes before we consider the resolution on the plan itself. Commissioner Buckley?
I want to give a word of appreciation to a community member, Neil Priester, who made this suggestion in a comment on Lakewood Speaks, and I agree with it. He preferred that throughout the documents where the words carbon neutrality appear, that we instead use the phrase net zero emissions. This is with respect to, you know, the science-based targets for greenhouse gas emissions. His point was that carbon neutrality is a slightly less strict, a little bit more lax phrase. It could include things like carbon offsets, which, you know, are arguably open to, you know, some economic gimmicks, and it's a less concrete thing to measure. And so in many cases, I think it's a, it means the same thing, but with a shade degree of stricter meaning. So this is a, you know, a motion to replace the phrase carbon neutrality wherever it appears with the document with a goal for net zero emissions. wherever it appears with the document with a, with a goal for net zero emissions.
Before we take a second on it, you may look to the audience and see an up or down arrow on that. I think maybe there was further explanation and discussion that makes that change unnecessary?
I'd be happy to hear about it.
But unfortunately, our public comments section is closed. Has staff had conversations on that and do they have guidance for us? Just plain maybe? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello Katie McCain, the Sustainability Manager, I haven't met you both in person yet, but nice to see you. So carbon neutrality and net zero emissions are synonyms, they're the same things. And we want to keep, we want to make sure that while offsets right now, the technology is really not there, absolutely right, I agree, we want to make sure we don't preclude technology advancing over time. So we want to keep that as an option, it doesn't matter which word we use. We did change it in the, in the memo, you'll see that we changed the science-based target from carbon neutrality to net zero already, so that will already be reflected in the change.
Commissioner Buckley.
I missed that, so thank you for clarifying, that change has been made. I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Any further proposed edits from Commissioners? I generally do not like folks shouting out. This time we'll give you a pass because that's on my list and I meant to bring it up. So this is, this is a good question. And help me understand the right way to look at this, the way I've always understood it is in the comp plan you have a future land use map, which is meant like everything else in the comprehensive plan to be advisory, to provide guidance, to be perhaps an indication, but the map that matters is the one that's adopted with the zoning ordinance. So I guess the question, and it'll be first for staff and then for Commissioners, how comfortable are you knowing that some folks have questions about the future land use map included in Envision 2040?
Again, the future land use map is advisory. It's generalized to several categories to make it understandable to, to the public and it's certainly used as influencing zoning, especially in a rezoning case, the comp plan is, is referenced, whether something complies or doesn't comply. Ultimately, those decisions lie in zoning though, in terms of the, the use of a property. So I'm kind of answering questions in a very general way, they worked quite detailed with a lot of input to come up with the future land use map that reflects community, the community vision and recognizes what's already there on, on, on the land and what could happen in the future. So it is looking at a lot of different factors when you look at these colors in these areas. And it's generally, you can see it's a little, the areas are a little fuzzy and that was intentional because those decisions, especially in those areas, are needed when a land use case comes to staff and the, and the Planning Commission with, with a specific proposal, then you look at setbacks, then you look at density and, and number of units and that sort of thing. So it's a, it's a relationship, but again, the comprehensive plan land use map is a higher level vision of, of reflecting existing land use and, and some potentials for the future. So kind of a general answer, but it's a general map.
Commissioners, your thoughts? This, at this moment, that future land use map, which did come out of the same process as all of the rest of the comprehensive plan, is included, is, is there thoughts about how you would like to deal with that aspect of the comprehensive plan at this stage? With the understanding that it's not meaningless, it has an effect on future land use decisions, but it is not regulatory the way the map in the zoning code is, which will come before this body as well as city council? Well, I will chime in first. I, I do not want to dismiss the fact that it has an effect, it will guide staff. I'm comfortable though, keeping it in as drafted because it is like everything else in the comprehensive plan, it is meant to be helpful, instructive, advisory, guiding, but it is not binding and there actually will be a binding map where this issue on individual parcels within the city will be resolved. So I would be comfortable personally with leaving it in with that understanding, but other Commissioners may have different views. In the absence of a motion, this, so we've had our comment, our public comment opportunity and we understand the issue, I do not see a motion on that issue and therefore I would ask again if there's any further motions from any Commissioners related to the plan. And with that, I would make a motion that we approve the resolution publicly available on Lakewood Speaks and prepared by staff for adoption of Envision 2040, the comprehensive plan, along with all edits approved by the commission this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Commissioner Buckley. Commissioner Buckley.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think the overall document is, is very good, I want to thank staff for all the work, all the advisory group members, everyone who has commented over the past two years and given their input over the, lots of hard work for this. So this is a, I think a big moment, the vote we're about to take and honor that. I also want to explain a little bit my thinking for my silence just now with respect to the map. I agree with the, you know, the rationales given, the, the areas, you know, the blobs, the colors in the future conceptual land use map are, are fuzzy, they are advisory, they are a lot less important than the zoning map. I myself have suggested change it for the zoning map when we get to that, you know, but I, I don't think that it rises to the level where the, the future advisory, not legally binding map is, is so radically wrong that it needs to hold things up. That's just how I'm looking at it. Thanks.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a vote on that motion. And that passes six to zero. Thank you so much to staff for all of your incredible work, thanks to everyone in the public who has been working on this for the last couple of years, thank you to Commissioners who have spent so much time on this. Envision 2040 has been adopted by the Planning Commission and will now be sent to the city council to see if they agree with us or not and everyone is reminded that the city council, there are opportunities to comment on it at that point as well. And with that, thank you so much, we will move on to item number four, which is the first discussion in a public hearing of the zoning ordinance amendments. And we'll begin with a brief presentation by Chief of Community Development, Planning, and Sustainability, I think I reversed those, maybe it's Sustainability, Community Development, Planning, Mr. Parker.
Good morning, planning, or good evening, I'm tired already and it's almost 8:30. Travis Parker, Chief of Sustainability, Community Development. I am not going to go through every recommendation that is in the memo and online, I think most of you have seen the presentation, I think most people in the audience have seen the presentation online. There are printing, printed versions of the memo on the table in the back for people that would like more information on individual subjects and I'm happy to dig in on anything that the, the public or the commission wants me to. But what I want to focus on in the interest of time today is not the stuff that, that was presented in that, not the general recommendations of the code, but a few items that have come up either from the Planning Commission or from the public in the public comments so far. So there are three areas I want to talk about, first, of course, horses and livestock and then I'll go on to some of the proposed rezonings and some questions that came from the Planning Commission on single-family home size. On the issues of horses and livestock, there is no intention to change or remove any permissions for horses and livestock. We did know, it was pointed out to us and we did notice that in the creation of the three new residential zones, the horse permissions that should have translated equally to all three, translated to rural and suburban, but for some reason not to urban. That was not intentional and that will be put back in the new code. Lakewood does have a very strong equestrian culture and it is our intention to continue encouraging that. So livestock and large animals will continue to be permitted at their existing permission levels in all of the three proposed new residential zones. So hopefully that helps a lot of people feel more comfortable with that aspect of the new code. The second thing, there were a lot of, there were maps of proposed rezonings on, in the draft with some of the big changes coming to the code. Obviously, you know, remapping the residential areas around the new residential districts, there was the removal of the mixed-use employment zone and, and the remapping of those, there was the removing of the LIRD zone and the remapping of those areas. In addition to those three that I won't go into more detail with unless, unless you want me to, there were a number of properties that had been identified over the past 15 years of the, you know, the current zoning code as, you know, largely having inappropriate zoning, zoning that renders them either unusable or, or not practicable for development. And so those have been identified here and they're all of course open for discussion for the public and for the Planning Commission and council. I want to really quickly go through the, those properties that don't fit into one of those broader categories of ME, LIRD, or residential. And so I think there are about 10 properties that were identified as miszoned. The first one is at Secondan Union, this is currently zoned MCT. The proposal is allow, is to rezone it to MGT to allow the medical uses that currently sit on the property. So this is next to St. Anthony's, if I'm not mistaken. Second property, and I'll go through these quickly but happy to go back and talk about, the second two properties are along Colfax or two groups of properties, Kipling to Colfax and Carr to Colfax. These are properties that retained a suburban context when the code was developed in 2012, but this is, you know, one of the more urban areas of the city and designed to be urban, so the proposal is to change those from an S context to an urban context along Colfax, so to, to allow for more pedestrian-oriented development while still retaining auto access. The next two are both properties that don't match their surroundings, so they're generally boxed in by, they're general, R16 or 12 properties that are boxed in by multifamily and other zoning. So some properties at 10th and Carr that have multifamily zoning surrounding them and properties at 9th and Carr in that same situation. The next category of properties are, there are only a couple properties in the city that are vacant properties on arterial roads with single-family zoning. And one of those you're going to hear a lot about tonight, the first one though is Pearson-Jewell, a property that has R1 for, you know, one acre zoning. It sits on arterial, arterial zones are not a place that has a demand for new single-family uses. And so this property and the next one are largely unusable under their existing zoning. So the proposal is to change this to our residential mid-form zone. The second properties, of course, Alameda and Kipling, you've heard a lot about that and probably will more tonight, this is a milestone property. It sits on the corner of two arterial roads and a portion of it is already mixed-use zoning, that's ME zone, will switch to another mixed-use zone with the removal of the ME. I think the controversial portion is the R2 portion that is currently subdivided for single-family lots under the R2 zoning, but as we all know has sat fallow for 20-plus years. Again, single-family residential zoning isn't really practicable on arterial roads. So the proposal in the current draft is to rezone this to MRU in light of a lot of the comments about that's an extreme density for this site or that allows commercial uses. The mixed-use residential does allow a limited number of commercial uses, an option might be to go the same direction as the Pearson-Jewell and lower that to residential mid-form, which would not allow any commercial uses and lower the density of that proposal. So I think that's a perfectly reasonable change to the, to the proposal in front of you tonight to lower the density of that somewhat. Another property is the current Emory School Site, this is a site that's going in front of council right now to allow reuse of that Emory building. The existing zoning wouldn't allow reuse of that Emory building, so proposal is for the mixed-use neighborhood on that site. And then the last two are properties along collector roads that still have one acre zoning that don't really allow any development of those sites. So proposal for residential multi-form at Yale and Pierce and another one at Wadsworth and East. So happy to go back and talk about any of those further detail or take questions on those either before or after public comment. The last thing I want to address, we did get some questions from the Planning Commission on the existing size of single-family residential buildings. So in creation, in the, in the creation of these new residential zone districts, the proposal is to limit the size of new single-family or new residential structures in those districts. And the question was, you know, given the proposals, how were those proposals come up to, come up with and how many existing buildings would be made non-conforming under those proposals? So if you remember, the, the proposal is for three new residential, new small-scale residential building, districts, a low-form rural, low-form suburban, and low-form urban. Each of those has a different maximum building size and here is sort of how they, they were come up with. So in the low for, actually this is all low-form, there are about, there are over 32,000 single-family homes in, in these districts in the city right now. This is their current, whoops, their current distribution of size, you can see the vast majority are between 1,000 and 2,500 square feet with some going all the way up to, believe it or not, there's a 16,000 square foot home in, in Lakewood right now and some that are under 500. But to separate this out into the three districts, in the, in what would be the rural district, there are currently 312 single-family homes. The proposal is to limit new structures in this district to 32, 150 square feet or less. That would leave approximately 40 non-conforming structures in the rural, in, in this district across the city of Lakewood, again, going all the way up to 1,600 square feet. In the suburban district, there are almost 20,000 single-family homes currently, as you can see, again, mostly those are between 1,000 and 2,500 square feet. The proposal in this district is to limit new homes to 3,000 square feet or less, that would leave approximately 1,219 homes or 6% of the existing homes in this area as non-conforming or larger than what a new home would be allowed to be built at. And in the urban district, there are nearly 13,000 existing homes. The proposal in the urban is to allow new homes to be up to 2,500 square feet. This would leave 627 homes or less than 5% of the homes in the urban district as non-conforming moving forward. So hopefully that answers the questions that were provided to staff, happy to dig into this. Happy to dig into this further.
Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, the question is for you. I'll let you sit down. Can you explain generally what impacts a homeowner might have for, you know, having a home that becomes non-conforming? If I'm adding up the numbers right from those three zones you went through, it's about close to 2,000 or so in the whole city would become, like, 2,000 residences would become non-conforming. So as a percentage of all the houses we have in Lakewood, that's like a low percentage, but in absolute numbers, 2,000 people are affected in some way, and so that's relatively a lot. What does that mean practically for the homeowner's ability to buy, sell, finance real estate, expand to improvements, you know, rebuild the house in case of a catastrophe, a total loss, a fire or something like that?
Absolutely. So, and I'm going to encourage Paul Rice to correct me if I get anything wrong, but I'll do my best to answer the question. So it has no impact for the continued use of the house, for any improvements that want to be made to the house, for any reconstruction if the house comes down. I think the only thing that would be presented is an expansion. So if your house is already too big, you can't make it yet bigger.
Okay. And I'm sorry, does our non-conformity section, there's a whole chapter of the zoning code that talks about non-conformities. Does it specifically state, you know, that something that is like in excess of maximum square footage or out of compliance with code can be rebuilt up to the same square footage, like in the event of a fire, for instance? This whole concept of regulating maximum building size, at least in residential areas, is new to Lakewood. So I want to make sure we've thought of this idea before with our old language that already talked about non-conformities.
I absolutely believe it does. I'm going to ask for Paul to confirm that.
Mr. Rice.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Overall.
Before you move on, take a look at Article 12 with this. And we've had this come up in the past. So when we did the update in 2012, I had to look to confirm this. You've got a homeowner, they have a non-conforming structure from previous zoning, and they want to do an expansion. We wanted them to do an expansion. So if you read the provisions, they can do 20%, 20 feet in length. So there are some provisions that we apply. And in the past, we applied the R16 zoning standards because it was generally the most permissive. Here, we're looking at low-form and mid-form in the two sections, but it does allow for small addition. So if they have a 20,000-square-foot home, 20% of that, somebody do the math for me. There we go. And so they could do a 20% addition. If they wanted to add, double the size, go to 40,000 square feet, that's not something they're going to be able to do. But they can make some modifications to the existing structure.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that's a part of the zoning code that I've never had to dig into deeply, too. Thanks for directing me to it all. I'll look it over, but it does sound like this sways some of my concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner Overall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Parker, you mentioned something in the beginning that I think might be of interest to people in the audience today, and I invite you to reiterate and expand upon what will and will not be changed in terms of agricultural and livestock use with these proposed changes in the zoning.
There's no intention to change anything. Like I said, there was, something got lost in translation for the low-form urban that will be replaced in the next version. So existing livestock regulations, we carry forward to the new code.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, staff, for the very informative memo. One question I have in kind of in relation to this in terms of livestock is around chickens. I know that this has come up before already and will likely again. I would love to understand a little bit better, and perhaps we need to have some clarity on what is currently allowed, but what residents currently can do in terms of chickens on their property, and then how does that shift with the new zoning? I've seen questions in the Lakewood Speaks comment section as well as from folks here. So I guess my specific question is, what are we currently allowed to do in terms of chickens? And how does that change with the adoption of the new zoning ordinance?
Mr. Rice.
So that's, thank you. That's a good question. And so under the exist, I need to find the zone districts so that I can talk intelligently. I think the R143, the 18 and 12 allowed for agricultural uses, which included poultry. Poultry was a lot of chickens. There was no number, and they were allowed in some limited areas in Lakewood. With the change in going to the rural, suburban, and urban, we removed the poultry provisions and applied the small animal provisions, which limits the number of chickens. So one thought is we could, and I'm not an expert on birds, that we could do something similar to horses, right? So if you have, the intent is if you have a small lot, six birds is generally enough. If you have a larger lot, a couple acres, acre, half acre, you could probably do more birds than six. What that number is, I don't know. Well, we could do something similar to horses. You have to have a minimum lot size of X, and you can have so many birds per 1,000 square feet. I don't know what those numbers are, but I could come back after some research to give you that. And I'm sure there's probably somebody in the audience that can reach out to me and give me some of those numbers as well. But it would essentially allow birds to vary based on lot size, and I think that's appropriate as well.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up? It's, I guess this is less of a question and more of a comment. I believe that everyone on, you know, or at least the vast majority of staff and this commission are interested and want to make sure that folks who can, who have property here in Lakewood are able to use it for agriculture, for growing your own vegetables, for having your own chickens and that kind of thing. I believe that that is the intention. There are a couple of existing operations in Lakewood. Specifically, I'm thinking of like small farms and co-ops and those kinds of things who may have a larger number of chickens, and they are able to provide eggs and other things to their neighbors and that sort of thing. I want to make my comment here and what my request to staff would be as you go back and do this would be to make sure that we are adequately accounting for what is currently happening and continuing to support especially folks with a larger lot and can support, you know. I guess what I'm trying to say is we need to make sure that we are being able to define what community-based agriculture looks like, what it is for folks to have eggs that they produce and maybe even sell to their neighbors. The difference between that and commercial egg operations happening within neighborhoods, which I do believe is accounted for in this. However, I want, I do want to make sure that we have really thought through what those numbers are and what those boundaries are so that we are really supporting community members who are doing this while also making sure that we're not inviting some kind of, you know, expansive egg farm in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
So what I take from this is that there are a number of ways to protect these interests. And number one is that it would be a continued right to use if it's been used. There is the question, and that's what Commissioner Buckley was bringing up about legal non-conforming uses in the future, but it also sounds like maybe we need to do a little more work. And my hope is that this evening we will receive suggestions from the public about what the right balance might be on that very issue. Yes, Mr. Rice.
And I got to Article 4. So as an example of what I articulated a minute ago related chickens, ducks, and other poultry, on page 416 of the draft, we specifically call out emus and ostriches, and it reads the second criteria, minimum lot square footage of 8,000 square feet and then 5,500 square feet for each animal. So it's actually, there must not need as much area as a horse, so it is a little smaller. But we could do the same thing and come up with some number.
Commissioner Overall, is your light on from earlier? Okay, thank you. We will have, oh, Commissioner Gribbly on us.
Thank you, Chair. Question for Mr. Parker, and it's related to the max residence size. I was trying to look it up real quick before the question came up, but I apologize. What is the, or do you know how many occupants are allowed per square foot for residents in the IRC?
It's a complicated formula, but basically it's by bedroom size. So it's 50, a bedroom can have one occupant per 50 square feet with a minimum of 70 square feet. And then there's also some additional rules for how much common area you have to have for how many residents you have. But the simple way to think of it is a 100-square-foot bedroom can have two people in it.
Okay, and you outlined it in the memo, but I guess I should just ask, could you talk in a little more detail about why you're setting a, or proposing setting a maximum size of a house and the concerns around the new legislation?
This might benefit us from some graphics. So as I discussed, both in the memo and in the presentation, House Bill 241007 now prohibits in Colorado communities from limiting the number, using zoning rules to limit the number of people in a single-family home. The only limitations now are the ones in the building code that you cited. So, you know, safety rules can limit the number, but that number is significantly higher than what we currently have. Currently, we limit a home to either a household of related people or up to five unrelated people. We can no longer do that. And so our definition of household basically becomes moot. It's not, we can't use that as a restriction on how many people can be in the home anymore. And then, you know, I talk about, you know, in the video somewhat, this also basically, if we, if now a homeowner can build a six-bedroom home and rent out each bedroom to two or three people, it sort of removes the, any sense in limiting the number of units because now, you know, they, these landlords can rent as many people as they can fit under the building code. The problem that this creates with our current code is this. Our current code doesn't have a maximum house size. It's, it allows you to build a house up to 35 feet high and up to your setbacks. So the larger the lot is, the larger a home can be. The average lot size in Lakewood is a little over 9,000 square feet right now. And as you can see, a 9,000-square-foot home could have a 16,000 to 18,000-square-foot structure on it, under today's code. So based on new Colorado law, if our office gets an application for a 20-bedroom home at 16,000 square feet, we can't say no. And so that's why this, that's why we're rethinking residential districts, right, in Lakewood. And so the proposal is to do two things. It's to create a limit that's large enough to allow a large, you know, a single-family structure that matches the existing, matches or, you know, slightly greater than the existing neighborhood, so not limiting people's rights to build a good-sized structure, but significantly lowering it from what could be done today. And then in those four walls, since we can't limit the number of people that can be rented to, it doesn't really make us, make sense to limit the number of units then either because it's almost better to have two small units than it is to have eight bedrooms individually rented out, or it's better to have that flexibility. Does that answer your question?
Definitely. Thanks.
So my suggestion for the commission is that we go to public comment now and hear from everyone, and then we all may individually have additional questions ourselves, but I am always eager to get to the public comment. I believe I have reshuffled this back to the way it was at the beginning so that no one is knocked out of order. But Andrew Woods.
Hi.
Okay. Sean Flag.
Flag.
Yep. Come on up, Sean.
Good evening. My name is Sean Flagel. I live in Ward 3, I believe. This is based on the milestone property. I'm here to speak on not only a neighborly fashion but a personal as well. I believe I'm not the only one here representing the property that actually backs up to that property, like my fence line is literally on the line of that property. Sorry, I lost my line. We are a Colorado family, two young kids. As a father, my ultimate duty is to protect the family from harm and strangers. I cannot allow the zoning for anything over a two-story building to pass. When we purchased this property, we knew that they were going to be building residential townhomes, something like that. When we found out about the whole apartment building over 100 feet in the air, it really concerns us because we have two small kilos. We can't protect them from people seeing inside our backyard or anything like that. Just the safety of walking around the neighborhood, I pray to God that you find yourselves in my position for my neighbor's position and our safety of our children. And that's it.
Questions from commissioners. So this is a result of the district that it currently is under. The proposal, since everything in that district hasn't been developed for anything, even single-family residential, is there a suggestion you have, and it sounded like you were suggesting that it should be limited to no more than two stories? That is your...
That's what we were, that's what we were informed when we were purchasing this property. Like, we knew they had to do something with it because it's been vacant for like 20 years, like I said.
Right.
Or I believe somebody else said, but anyway, we were okay. I mean, a fence line's a fence line. If you've got another backyard to it, that's fine, but we can't imagine having a parking lot or, you know, like I said, 100-foot building for, you know, just looking over everything. I mean, we've been dealing with the whole traffic noise and everything. We'll take that over 100-foot building.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you.
I'm struggling.
I'm struggling to find it right now, but I believe it is the case that that MRU district that Mr. Parker showed on the map, that that lot is potentially proposed to go to, has a height limit significantly less than 100 feet. Perhaps someone on staff can clarify what the height limit in the MRU zone is.
Just started looking that up while...
Yeah, I've been trying to look it up, too, and I'm not finding it so quickly.
I believe it's 96 feet. That's what I said. We had a town meeting or a neighborhood meeting and everything, and it said 96 feet, up to 96. Sorry, I probably overshot it a little bit. Sorry.
So Commissioner, is this a question for the witness, or do you want to have staff?
We can have staff comment when staff finds the answer. Just wanted to point a clarification, though. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
And Mr. Parker, I don't know if that's handy or not.
35 feet.
35 feet.
In MF.
Okay. Okay. Well, the good news is that we are early in the process.
So the question was the mid-form residential, right? That, so the proposal is, was for MRU, which is a higher, and I looked that up as well. But the question is...
So, and I appreciate that clarification. So... Or do you want to have staff?
We can have staff comment when staff finds the answer. Just wanted to point a clarification though.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Parker, I don't know if that's handy or not.
35 feet.
35 feet.
In MF.
Okay. Okay, well, the good news is that we are early in the process.
So, so the question was the mid-form residential, right? That, so the proposal is, was for MRU, which is, which is a higher. And I looked that up as well.
Right.
But the question is-
So, and I appreciate that clarification. So what you're saying this evening is that one possible thing to consider is a different district than the one that maybe was currently indicated. And that would be much, much lower. The 35. All right? But again, no decision is being made at this point. That is a thought to consider. Commissioner Buckley?
I found what I was looking for. So yeah, I'll reinforce that what the chair just said. This is not a decision or final or anything. It's just facts. The current proposed zoning map shows that property going to MRU, which has a 60-foot height limit. Director Parker suggested that RM could be an appropriate zone district as well. That has a height limit of 35 feet. So 35 or 60, not 96 or 100, just facts. Thank you.
Though just to potentially inflame things, I would say, since no decision has been made, it could also be rezoned for a 1,000-story building. I don't think that's likely.
Sure.
But we're early on, and that's what we're getting comment on. Terrific. The next person I have is Candace Taylor. Oh, Candace, maybe you said neither. Unless you tell me otherwise. Candace Taylor. Might have gone. Brennan Williams? Okay. Paul Ditsen.
I just lost my place on the way down. I did have one question online. And I was a little disappointed from the last segment of this meeting that some questions that are asked online or, or suggestions were not brought up for consideration. So I'm kind of wondering what the purpose is of accepting comments online. One that I had specific to the zoning ordinance was where this limiting by house size has been done previously and what cities. You know, I'm just looking for some information that we can use to guide what the decision-making is and see if we can understand what might be some of the pitfalls and unintended consequences of doing something like that. And unfortunately, I don't have my other comment here in front of me. Okay. Removal of the ME zone. I have some concerns about that. That zoning was created in order to address concerns about the lack of commercial and retail that has evolved as an unintended consequence of the mixed-use category. And here we are considering eliminating that. And that was, you know, at the time, considered to be a way that we could try to mitigate that problem, as well as the creation of the Housing Commission to address concerns such as this, I think. And I'm not seeing any proposal to replace that, that issue. It still remains that we, particularly on, on Colfax, which borders the Iber neighborhood, that we are not seeing the type of services that the local communities need and have been demanding for years. And leaving it up strictly to the market just doesn't seem to be working. So what, where in this process can we take action and try to address that concern? It's been a problem since the adoption of the 2012 zoning ordinance.
And I appreciate that you and I have had this conversation. And I completely agree with you that what we want is residential that also has a significant commercial component that serves those residents. Would you not agree, though, that this idea, which was meant to address that, has not really worked? We simply are not getting those kinds of projects. And instead, we need to look for something new. And we are very open to what an alternative strategy may be.
I can't really offer a solution. This is a very difficult problem, I understand. I might point out that this ME zone, if I recall correctly, was instituted in 2019. COVID had, I think, a significant impact on any kind of development. So it's a little, I think, premature to conclude that there is no potential for developing that type of use. And I might also add that I don't know how the Economic Development Department operates, but it just seems to me that logically, there could be more done to try to attract that kind of development.
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Neil Prester.
Neil Prester, Ward One. I'm representing the Lakewood Advisory Committee this evening as it relates to these documents that I'm, that I'm making reference to here. And going chronologically through those, I'd like to cover, cover a couple of points here. Sorry, I only had one copy. This document was produced and submitted to City Council in 2024. It was 19 pages with four primary recommendations and 24 secondary recommendations. It is entitled Green Renovation Beneficial Home Electrification and Upgrade Program. Our second primary recommendation was to make additions to the Enhanced Development Menu, Article 13, and to continue to adapt as condition, as conditions develop in order to meet goals. The secondary recommendations based on that primary recommendation were to expand and target single-family homes without square footage restrictions, to remove the current regulation that exempts new construction of single-family homes under 2,500 square feet, and to add electrical compliance for heat pump replacements where they're replacing a, a natural gas burning appliance. In reference to that, also on this, we are referencing the Laco 2021 Greenhouse Gas Emissions Summer Report that indicates from the period 2020, 2007 to 2021, greenhouse, excuse me, natural gas consumption, Lakewood has gone up 3%. So in spite of goals to try and limit natural gas consumption and thereby limit greenhouse gas emissions, we're heading in the wrong direction. And this, this paper was addressed to try and, was, was researched to try and address the 20, the 42,000 existing residences in Lakewood and look at how to limit natural gas rise in consumption. So the deficiencies that we see in the Enhanced Development Menu currently is again, that we don't see coverage for homes under 2,400 square feet as a new construction. We don't see coverage for the existing 42,000 single-family homes in a remodel situation or where, where gas appliances are being replaced. And recognize that this is a primary tool that the Planning Department uses to meet those goals that are now contained within the Planning Commission about zero emissions by 2020, by 2050. So there is potential for improving that to meet those goals. Secondarily, outside my role as, as LAC, there was a City Council request for legislative modification that was brought before City Council by, by Councillors Nystrom and Labure, where they addressed natural gas burning fireplaces. That was voted down by a vote of eight to two, but the consent, the no votes almost exclusively were registering support for additional measures to limit natural gas consumption. That a standalone item was not something that they thought could be effective and that they were looking towards the zoning rewrite to achieve some of those goals on a broad basis. So there's broad support for, for these kind of Enhanced Development Menu improvements within City Council. We recognize that these requests that we're making to the Enhanced Development Menu are not trivial and that there could potentially be political blowback. But we think there's a narrative that exists that supports all of them, not the least of which is the goals within the sustainability, the Comprehensive Plan about Zero Emissions by 2050.
Thank you. And so the big concept is, from the LAC, is to expand the application of the Enhanced Development Menu to all new or redevelopments?
As it relates to new, it's for 2,500 home, uh, square feet or below. Currently, there's an exemption for, for homes below 2,500 square feet, which is problematic. There's some argument that that's going to capture 90% or 95% of the new homes that are being built. But I think that also leads to the argument that that should be an easy reach then, if we're not affecting the, the development or the developers by that. Don't know how that breaks down. As it relates to remodels, Enhanced Development doesn't touch it. It doesn't touch gas appliance replacements. So sooner or later, if we're going to try and hit those, those zero emissions goals, we're going to run, we're going to run smack into this. Currently, the residential sector provides 28% of Lakewood's greenhouse gas emissions. And we will not eliminate those until we can address consumption.
Do you know, and could, and if you could provide these materials to the whole commission, it would really be useful.
I can do it digitally.
That's fine. And do you know or can you get any research that would be helpful that tells us whether these sorts of proposals are handled through zoning or building codes in, in comparable jurisdictions? Because I'm trying, I'm having a little difficulty figuring out where it fits in. And I also have some concerns. You know how concerned I am about sustainability, but I have concerns about affordability of housing as well.
I can tell you that when we brought these issues up at the Enhanced Development Menu, we got responses that it's not just the Enhanced Development Menu that we have to, have to address these through, but also through the zoning ordinances. And recognize that, that this shouldn't be a standalone effort. The financial argument exists that the increased costs that come from this are only a short-term issue. And a long-term issue, positive return on investment comes every time, every time. So the pushback is about depriving a certain constituent of the opportunity to take advantage of these technologies and the, and the resulting rebates or incentives.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you so much for coming today and speaking to us about this. I just want to further clarify, maybe sort of the broad goal here and, and what you're potentially asking us to do, which is to identify a way to prevent additional natural gas power from being able to be used in residential development in Lakewood in the future, pretty broadly, right? Including things, as you mentioned, you know, furnaces, replacing with heat pumps, those kinds of things in an effort to further reach our emissions goals as a city, right? Is that bottom line really what we're looking at here? Trying to reduce or eliminate the need for natural gas appliances in new construction.
That's a simplified explanation, given that the technology exists.
Right.
The financial model exists. The emissions come from fossil fuel burning. So the goal is to eliminate those to the best extent possible.
Great. Thank you for just, I just really wanted to level set that. I, I think, I'm grateful that you brought this to our attention so we can be aware of this as we go through this process. I think there's a lot of ways that things like this can squeak by and then it impacts our ability to reach our sustainability goals. I'm just very grateful so that we can make sure that we do address sort of natural gas usage in our zoning code. But I also agree with the chair that this probably is a zoning thing, but it's probably also much broader. And I look forward to this commission and the, you know, the sustainability staff to, to continue to identify ways to make sure that this is a comprehensive thing and not just in the zoning ordinance in a couple of places. So thank you.
It can be said that if you're trying to strictly outlaw natural gas development, it will be litigated and you will lose. But there's good opportunity to address those same kind of goals through ordinances, through the Building Department, Planning. Those efforts are successful and are, are effective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Stuberer? Then Sarah Lindback?
Hello? My name is Sarah Lindback. I believe I'm part of Ward Three as well. I'm a homeowner on Hoyt Street, adjacent to the Milestone property. I'm, I too am concerned about the rezoning that is being proposed for the open lot at the southeast corner of Kipling and Alameda. I feel that the increase in allowable building height would be a big misstep when looking at the neighborhood context and existing building heights. I'm also concerned about the traffic impact and the limited through streets that are currently in the neighborhood. I am an architect and have worked on numerous infill sites around the greater Denver area for the past 15 years. Context and scale are important factors in what I do. I feel it is important to look at the adjacencies and massing context for a site when taking on the responsibility of development. I also know how it feels to sit on both sides of the table when it comes to rezoning efforts and development efforts. I feel the most appropriate development for this piece of land is a continuation of the single-family homes adjacent to the lot or similar low-form residential urban use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Thank you so much. Mike Jordan? Stephanie Keller?
I'm Stephanie Keller, and I live at 790 South Cody Street. I have horses that come right up to the sidewalk. And in 2001, when COVID hit, people were, were circling the block. And they'd, they'd stop and talk to the horses and feed them an apple, go on. And then the next person would come up and this, this went on and on. And a couple of weeks ago, I had a, a group of probably 10 three-year-olds that they brought over to see the horses. So, you know, so it's a wonderful addition to the community. And I, my property has been grandfathered in for 50 years. And what I'd like to see is, is that, I don't know how the zoning goes, but I'd like to see all properties opened up to, to increase the, the horses and animals in the neighborhood. Because we're unique, you know, Greenwood Village, Cherry Hills and Lakewood. And everywhere else, everywhere else just, you know, is, has conformed. And we are unique and it keeps prices up. You know, I can, I'd like to see that. I have to find a bathroom.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming out and thank you for waiting. Cheryl Laudner?
Yeah, I'm Cheryl Laudner. I think Ward Three. I'm talking about the property two from Milestone. Fought this, talked, spent lots and lots of months talking to Milestone years back. When they wanted to come in, put in the apartments, we came up with, and they actually agreed with us. And that's why it's not developed right now. But there were so many problems with that. Number one, there are, they could go out on Kipling, right past that school. past that school, or they could go right out on Hoyt, on Alameda, and to have that many people. I mean, right now, we have to sit there quite a waste if you're going to get off of Hoyt and go left on Alameda. You're talking a lot of people. That land, they decided to, was too small to have apartments where there was no parking for them. They would be parking in our neighborhood. I work with trafficked girls that we have rescued from trafficking. And to put them in apartments like what they were talking about is very dangerous for them. We have chosen no longer to be doing that because there's a lot of drugs going on. There's a lot of more trafficking. We asked them why they couldn't do single family, and they literally said, "We won't make enough money." We, they want to make apartments. I wanted to ask Mr. Parker.
Actually, we always appreciate your comments, but just direct them to the commission.
If you could ask him why he said, "You can have these two main streets for all the apartments and a whole lot more people, but you can't have them for the single homes." That time, that, it was perfectly fine if they would have developed that with the single homes. But at that, they did not want to do that because of money. And it really, I agree with the father who is worried about his kids right back there. You're talking way too many people for that little, little parcel of land. So can you ask him that?
Well, so let me ask you this. The one suggestion that Mr. Parker made this evening was that it would be zoned at a residential level that is a height of 35 feet.
Okay, how many apartments is that?
Well, I mean, we, we're obviously, this is all purely hypothetical. I'm just asking you whether or not that you think is excessive, or would that be reasonable?
If there are too many apartments and too many people and there's no place for them to park, they're going to be parking in our, right in front of our homes. And getting out, we, we don't have access to get out of there very much. For single families with, you get, I don't know, 15 families there, it would be very easy. But for apartments, no.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, it's scary. This whole neighborhood, it, it is not, apartments are fine, but not this little parcel. This little place, it is not on Alameda and, and Kipling right there. Okay.
Thank you. I just want to make sure there aren't any other commissioners that have questions. Thanks so much.
Hello, Lauren Scanlon, Iber Neighbor, Ward One. Thank you to the Planning Commission and everyone involved in the creation of the new zoning ordinance, and thank you to my concerned neighbors who have come out today to be involved in the future of their communities. I have the following concerns. First, I'm an Iber resident and farm owner on two acres. Iber is a recognized sustainable neighborhood that already has mature tree corridors, conserved green spaces, noxious weed management, and key wildlife habitats. We are already meeting the stated goals of the comp plan, so I'm not sure why our neighborhood and adjoining ones with many large lots are, according to the proposed zoning map, almost all being rezoned urban. The language says that this would gently change the neighborhood to a more urban, walkable context, but if my property sold to a developer, it would allow up to 30 urban homes to be placed, which is not gentle at all. I oppose Iber being broadly zoned RLU, as I do not think it respects the realities of our neighborhood or the wishes of its residents. Property should be zoned according to size and historic use, and I hope we can find other avenues to affordable housing that doesn't substantially change the positive contributions our neighborhoods already make to the city. In regards to what Mr. Parker said earlier, there are specific edits that need to be made to match the ongoing horse use. And I understand there were issues with the red line document, but while the language in 17.4.3 C1C does not list, or sorry, it does not list horses as permissible in RLU, and indeed, the proposed setback would affect many smaller properties that currently share fences with their neighbors. At a time when the state is expanding equestrian facilities, like the $400 million equestrian project at the National Western Complex and the newly reinvigorated Jeffco Fairgrounds, horse riders and owners need to be truly understood and protected. I encourage the adoption of the SB 25-149 bill, which adds signage to keep equestrian road users safe, as well as designates equestrian zones within the city. I ask that the Planning Commission and the Planning Department have a meeting with me and the new Lakewood Equestrian Advisory Group I'm creating, as well as the Jefferson County Horse Council and the Iber Neighborhood Association, to work together to ensure we can support each other and further protect these areas long-term. Finally, I echo Mr. Rice's suggestion that chickens and other small farm animals should be regulated according to property size to accommodate their use in feeding our communities as egg layers and sources of protein, as well as their humane keeping of these animals as pets. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you to build a better Lakewood and to find solutions that work for all of us.
Questions? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for coming and for your really thoughtful remarks. I appreciate that. Can you just repeat the specific zoning?
Yeah.
Line that you were referring to?
I was trying to pack as much as possible into three minutes here.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, 17.4.3 and C and D are the areas where I just don't think, C, I think, was probably just an error in keeping everything consistent. D, I've heard from a number of neighbors with smaller, kind of the R19 properties. Often, they're sharing fences with other horse neighbors. That helps herd animals, keep community with each other. It really supports that. So adding this 15-foot setback would create basically nonconformity in these uses.
Thank you.
My one question is on this very specific issue, and it may not be something you've got to answer to now, but you will have many other opportunities. The notion of regulating poultry by lot size, is there some rule of thumb you would suggest, or might others suggest?
Yeah, the, I, I think actually the four-square foot of interior living space, which I believe was the previous zoning, is really great. And just to put that into perspective, it's something like, you know, an 80-square foot, you know, so like a 10 by eight coop, with that being the interior, can house like 15 chickens. If somebody really wanted to build in, on a large lot like mine, if they wanted to build a 30-chicken house, that would still not even be a 16th of an acre. We often have runs with those as well, so there could be language surrounding outdoor space as well. But as, you know, and I think there could be a safe upper limit to prevent, you know, poultry farming on a thousand-bird scale. But yeah, I think there are really effective ways to manage those limits and keep them consistent with the ability to feed. I mean, egg prices are a huge deal right now. That supports your farmers as well. They're, they're premium add-on product. Chickens help us with compost. There's, there's so many other things. I won't go on, but there are really effective ways to make sure that they're manageable for the neighborhood while also feeding the neighborhood.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michael on Newcombe Street. And Michael, I did not even make an attempt on your last name.
You came close the first time.
Oh, gee.
Michael Malecki, 2551 Newcombe Street, Lakewood. I have no idea what ward. I'm here on behalf to speak about the zoning. I heard that this oversight on the livestock and small animals, you look at the document, I'm calling not accurate, be polite, because it's littered throughout 17, 4, 1, and 3, that this was malicious attempt to go after the ability for livestock and small animals on all-size lots. They took it away from 12, 9, 6, and 2. That's not an oversight. That's intentional. They take away the poultry. That's not an oversight. That's intentional. Now we're talking, hey, wait a minute, we're going to keep it. Well, if you're going to keep it, keep the R16, the R43, the R12, the R6, the R9, the R2. You don't need to change it. If we're going to keep what we have, why are we inventing new definitions of what we have? I don't pay taxes based upon RLR. I pay taxes based upon square foot of a lot. You're going to tell me I can have horses based upon square foot of a lot. I can have chickens based upon square foot of a lot, but the city doesn't recognize a square foot of a lot? They want to go RLL, RLR. Rural characteristics is a definition of that. Now go to suburban. Suburban says multi-unit on large lots, usually deeper than they are wide. Hmm. Where's the rural characteristics in that? That's your mantra in RLR, but then you go down to RLU, oh boy, here we go. We're going to have compact housing. Hmm. Where's the rural characteristics in that? It's not there. So leave 17, 4, 1 alone and the corresponding supplemental descriptions of 17, 4, 3. You already have it. It's not broke. And on the boundary fence, how many times has actually the director had to get involved in a fence dispute on mutual property? My horse is board our neighbor's horses. We share a fence. My other neighbor has no horses, no problems. If he had a problem, he goes to director, director says there's a problem, I want an eight-foot buffer. Why double it down to 15 feet? That's 2,500 square feet of corral. I would lose if you adopt that. All right, then you're going to make it nonconforming because you have shrunk it where I can't meet the nine and five. So leave it alone. It's not broke. It's not fixed. It doesn't need to be redefined. An R2 is not an R12 lot. There is differences there. You already recognize the differences, but we're going to make them all one. From 12 down to 2, you're going to make one designation for it. Compact housing. Thank you for your time. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
It's been a long one.
Thank you.
Hello again. Jake McGrath, Ward Three. And if this isn't the, the proper time for a question, that's okay. I did want to know, specifically, I noticed that there was a designation between R112 and R19 being split, or sorry, R16 and R112 being split between suburban and urban. And I think I caught at the beginning, it's based on house size or average house size, how that distinction is being made. I just wanted clarification there, and if it exists, I just didn't see it. That was the first part of the question. The second part of the question is specifically with a neighborhood that I live in, it seemed like part of the neighborhood was, will now be classified as urban and another part of the neighborhood be classified as suburban. And the, the division, while made along a street seems, I guess from somebody living in the neighborhood, a little bit arbitrary. Like my neighbor's houses don't seem different than mine, but there's a strip of the, of the neighborhood that's now classified as urban. And I just wanted, I guess, some clarification to understand how that distinction is being made and if there any, any, if there's going to be any significant differences that have to do with that designation to, to houses that on the surface seem to be the same. And I know before we're zoned to be all R112. Thank you. That's all.
The, and I wish I had a good answer for you, but the, the one thing I would suggest is that in our earlier study session, was it the April 9th presentation maybe, had materials from the consultants kind of explaining the rationale. And I think Chief Parker described it again in terms of the configuration of the roads and, you know, whether the urban contact is more rectilinear and, and that sort of thing. So there's more materials online, and that, that might be a good place to go to get some of these answers. But we obviously encourage you to work with staff and, and get more specific answers on your neighborhood.
Okay. And is, and if I, if I don't know, I apologize. Is there a specific contact for them that I can ask those questions online?
Yes. There is, and I don't know, Chief Parker, if you want to direct, but it's to the Planning Department's website on the Lakewood.org.
And there is a, there's a website just for this zoning update, Lakewoodtogether.org/zoningupdate. And you can submit questions right there.
Perfect. Thanks.
Terrific. Thank you. Samantha?
She did.
Good evening, and good job pronouncing my last name. Good job. I do want to thank you and acknowledge your comment about nonconforming. I'm one of those nonconforming properties. And I have a question about that. I am thankful for the acknowledgement about poultry and the sharing of eggs, because that is what I do, with my neighbors, and wanted to continue to do that and exchange that with, you know, vegetables and things that they grow, and also the equestrian and livestock portions of it. So getting kind of to my questions or comments, one is, like, there's a purpose and intent section, and it says we want to respect the unique characteristics and attributes of individual neighborhoods in there. And I do feel like Belmar Gardens is being split into urban and suburban, and that does not respect the unique individual attributes of that neighborhood in particular, where we do have a lot of equestrian and livestock. So I would ask that you reconsider the splitting of that neighborhood in particular. There might be others out there, too, that would benefit from that review. And then going into the fencing portions of it, too, I do think that there is, I, I have a lot of concerns with the setback that have been expressed already. We do share our fencing with our neighbors who have livestock, and to put a 30-foot buffer between our horses would not be beneficial. There's no reason for it. I would ask that we strict that language that's in there that says the containment area shall be located no less than 15 feet from the side or rear lot line, and use the existing language that's still there that allows for us to have disputes, if there's any disputes with the property owners next to us. I would also like to ask that we consider the accessory to permitted use. I don't quite understand that for those properties that are still going to be in the residential urban. I don't understand what permitted use means, because when I look at the table, it permitted use, accessory permitted use looks like it's childcare facilities. They have permits, right? And there's like another one, I think, that was like a temporary trailer. You had to have that, a permit for that. So I'm confused for those put in urban. What is considered accessory to permitted use there's for livestock? Because we're not seeing that, there's not a permit process for livestock. Do you know what I mean? I hope that makes sense.
I think I do, and I would ask our, our staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you're referring to is whether it's an allowed use, not that it requires a permit. Is that, yeah, this is a permitted, a permitted use in a district is one you're allowed to do as a matter of right.
The definition of accessory uses in 17 dot 4 dot 1 dot 2, it says, uses identified with an A in the use table are allowed in the specific zone district as accessory to a permitted use only.
Right.
But you don't have that in the limited uses. There's not that statement of permitted use in limited uses. And when I look at the, on the table, when I look at other areas that are designated with accessory use, it would be like a childcare facility.
Okay.
And that's why, I guess I'm just confused by that.
Sure. No, I appreciate that.
If that makes sense.
And I think we can get an answer to that.
Okay. Thank you.
And let me just ask you on this, this issue of the 15-foot setback, because we've heard that from several folks. This is, is this the 15-foot setback for containment building? It's not that the horse stays away 15 feet from the fence. It's the place where you're keeping the horse? Is that?
So it's that, let me get this. It's, it's a section, it's, I think it's 17 dot 4 dot 3 dot C. It's a section, I think it's 17 dot four dot three dot C dot one dot D. It says a minimum containment area of 300 square feet shall be provided and used for each animal. Then the next line that you have added is the containment area shall be located no less than 15 feet from the side or rear lot. It's that second sentence that I ask that we reconsider.
So I will tell you, I have more experience with the Board of Adjustment with the Jefferson County, where we had a lot of agricultural properties, we saw. That setback was typically 50 feet for horses. And it's a nuisance issue because of the smells that may come from the lovely animals. Do you have a suggestion as to what would be a reasonable if 15 feet is too much? What would be reasonable? Shouldn't there be some distance for the containment?
Not if we are grandfathered in. Like, I'm sharing my property, like, we share fence. We pay and share our fence costs with our neighbors. So I don't want to have any setback, because I want to be able to share that fencing with my neighbors.
Yeah.
And continue to do so.
Yeah, no, I understand that. And again, the general rule is that you can continue to do that. We're talking about if you say, well, I want to add a new building, you would be under this draft, have to build that 15 feet from the fence, not tear down your current one. Does that make sense? But if you were doing a new one?
It does, except for that we haven't seen any language that grandfathers us in.
Well, there's a whole section of the zoning code that talks about non-conforming uses, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's not clear to us, though, I don't believe.
Okay.
So I appreciate that. Thank you.
No, no. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yes.
I actually meant other questions from commissioners.
Oh, sorry.
I appreciate it. I think we're going to, if it's all right, we're going to move on. But you're free to submit any additional comments, obviously to staff through the website on Lakewood Speaks, but I think we've got a good sense of your concerns.
Okay. On the hens, I did want to note sizing-wise, I think, I agree with Lauren. I think you guys are actually on to sizing in that what is in there, like, I think you have 36 square feet. That is really doable for 15 chickens. And so I, like, I definitely have concerns with only six. In fact, when I got my property, there wasn't that limit, because we were very much agriculture. So I think if you would definitely reconsider this number that we can have on our larger lots, that would be appreciated. And I, like I said, I do think you're okay on the sizing there. You just need to increase the number of birds. And then, like, I agree with maybe a reasonable limit, so we're not doing commercial. And then on the non-conforming side, I guess I did have one comment that I'm not quite clear on the non-conforming, whether or not that would apply to, I heard you say, like, replacement, if there was a fire, the 20% addition, if we wanted to do that. Does that also, non-conforming, does that take into account if we wanted to do an additional, like, shed-out building, garage, detached garage? Like, is that an issue if we're non-conforming already?
Yeah. I'm afraid we probably can't answer that, but professional staff could. If you give them a specific scenario, they could tell you how it would work. But again, these rules are just proposed at this point. But they could, I'm sure, give you that assistance.
Okay. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. This is someone on Virginia Drive. Could be Renee, could be Kenneth.
Kenneth.
Yep. All right. Could it be Kenneth?
That's it.
Okay.
If I can get up there.
I appreciate everyone making me feel better about my own handwriting.
Well, you know, they always told me, when you write a check, make sure nobody knows what it is.
You did well.
My name's Kenneth Ramovitz. I live at 9673 West Virginia Drive. I will start off with one other thing. In 2002, I was president of the HOA, which is now Alameda Community, which at that time was Alameda. Milestone was one of our individuals that wanted to build some apartments. There was five buildings approximately 10 stories high. With that being said, we were trying to decide on what we would be the best for 16 and a half acres of land. After several years of meeting, Alameda finally accepted the property to an R4, which is a residential at the present time. The property is located between Garrison Street and runs north and south, and Kipling, which runs north and south. We are between two major streets. On the south side of the home is Addenbrook Park. The north side, of course, is the 16 and a half acres that is undeveloped. Our two district is intended to provide a small lot and single duplex residential development. After several studies from 2002 until now, I have made various different surveys and through the apartment houses, which are located in Belmar and throughout the neighborhood of Lakewood, we found out that approximately 80% of these apartments are occupied. We have two exits, Dakota Street, Virginia Drive. Both are outlets to Garrison Street. The other one is Hoyt Street, which enters Alameda. To make a left-hand turn on Alameda, it takes several minutes to get across the intersection to go west. We are a very unique neighborhood. No traffic, no crime, no noise. We don't have to deal with large buildings and lighting. Any development on this property would have to be another exit. And according to the plans of the residential area, Alameda Place would be entering the north part of Addenbrook Park. I'm sorry, excuse me. The west entrance, or, yeah, the west, I'll get it right yet, west entrance of Addenbrook Park to get onto Kipling in order to go either north or south, or you can go west. Property to make turn on Alameda, of course, I already said that, I'm repeating myself. We have other issues with the 16 and a half acres, such as underground water level. At the present time, this property is not really suitable for anything other than residential at the present time. With the things that I have mentioned, with the crime, the traffic, the population growth and everything, it's not suitable for anything but residential area. It's already developed, or I should say, pre-planned for residential homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Thank you very much. Rusna? Rus?
Russia?
Russia. Sorry. Rusha Naur.
Good evening. I am here as a resident of 9612 West Virginia Circle. I live in Ward Three. My neighborhood backs up to the property that aligns with the undeveloped space owned by the Milestone Apartment Group. This open space has been slotted for rezoning because, as the City Planning Department stated in their presentation last Friday, this land has been difficult to develop due to zoning. However, as a resident of the neighborhood who has access to our HOA records and past communications, I can attest that the only reason that this land has been difficult to develop is because of the developers themselves, who refuse to build within zoning ordinances or to negotiate to build anything less than high-rise, high-density apartment buildings. I would like it to be known that in the 19 years that Milestone has owned this property, they have planted hay on the land to avoid paying property taxes, costing the city and county approximately $2.5 million in taxes that would have otherwise been paid. In addition to my concern about why this rezoning is being introduced into the new zoning ordinance plan in a manner that seems to prioritize the developer over the tax-paying citizens of Lakewood is the fact that the city has violated their own zoning ordinance in an attempt to rezone this property. In the zoning ordinance, 17 point two point three point three, states that the legislative zoning is allowed when it affects a large number of properties and the proposed rezoning is not applicable to a specific individual or readily identifiable group. This land is owned by an easily identifiable developer, and there is a large sign on the property in case anybody is confused about who owns it. 17 point two point three point five states that the review procedure must include steps to be taken when rezoning is proposed. It seems the city has skipped the neighborhood meeting, and now we find ourselves at the Planning Commission hearing. That neighborhood meeting should have happened several steps ago, according to the city's own zoning ordinance. In addition to the lack of a neighborhood meeting to ensure that we in Alameda Homes would understand how the proposed rezoning would affect our neighborhood and the surrounding area, the rezoning of this property was put into the non-residential zoning map. So it was not easy or apparent to anybody in our neighborhood how this rezoning would actually affect our neighborhood or the nearby area. I would also like to point out, in the housing plan that was approved last year, it points out that there is a need for smaller residential properties. The Milestone property is perfect for this. And the city and the neighborhood have been trying to get Milestone to develop the land in that manner for 20 years. In addition, there's been a lot of conversation tonight about height. When you look at the proposed rezoning height limit, the conversations that we've had do not include incentive height. So when you look at the proposed rezoning and you add all-applicable incentive height allowances, that means on that property, 96-foot-tall apartment buildings can be built. There is nothing within spitting distance with, that is higher than two stories of that neighborhood. So I would like to strongly urge the Planning Commission to make sure that that land on Alameda and Kipling is rezoned as low-form residential urban with a maximum height allowance that does not include incentive height. Thank you.
Are there any questions for commissioners? Thank you so much. Andy Naur.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Andy Naur. I am also a resident of the Alameda Homes neighborhood in Ward Three. I would first like to apologize for my earlier outburst. I just really wanted to get the map issue answered, so I apologize. This is a really important issue to us. I wanted to talk a little bit about the traffic issue. I just wanted to make sure that it was understood that these are non-signalizable intersections that would involve the going in and out of the neighborhood, and that we are particularly concerned by the fact that a lot of the traffic that would go to this new development would probably come through the neighborhood off of Garrison as a way to avoid having to make a left turn onto Alameda and then an additional left turn onto Hoyt to get into the neighborhood. So I think one thing we are all concerned about is probably not height so much, although I think it's a big deal. And I love the idea of going down to a residential zoning, zoning, because it, A, eliminates the commercial idea, which would cause a lot of traffic. It also eliminates the height incentive, which I really think should be renamed to an environmental or a green building incentive, so it doesn't sound like you're incentivizing height. But if we get down to a residential, then we at least have a reasonable height. But we are also concerned about the number of units that will be in this. And that, I think, is why most people would still like to see this done as a residential, low-form residential. Arguably, I don't know that we care if it's urban or suburban. I don't particularly. However, every one of our streets is curved, and all of them end in cul-de-sacs. So I'm pretty sure that was the two things that were the difference of urban and suburban. So probably really low-form residential suburban would be the most reasonable. We are always happy to have a rezoning application put in by Milestone through the regular process and work with Milestone to develop something that is reasonable. I don't like this idea of just switching the zoning through the zoning ordinance, which, like my wife said, doesn't even seem to be a way that zoning usually gets changed. If we, we've been community-engaging for 20 years, and we've been very clear about what is important to us, and the idea of putting this in the zoning is frankly insulting. So I really would like, I'm happy to talk to Milestone about what makes sense. I'm happy to have them put in a zoning application, bring a real plan, and let us talk about it, as opposed to hoping they won't cram as many units into 35 feet or 95 feet as they possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Aaron Robinson. Aaron might have stepped out. Amy Hillard. Jed Phillips.
Jed Phillips, Ward Three. So the zoning ordinance, pretty exciting time. I support a lot of the changes that will encourage growth and livability in Lakewood going into the future. However, there is a few areas where the ordinance, in my opinion, does not go far enough. I'd like to highlight one such area as, in my opinion, the single most impactful part of the code that is preventing the future we want for Lakewood, the future outline in the comprehensive plan, and that is minimum parking requirements. Parking is one of the least valuable ways for a city to use its land. Parking wants to take up what could be made into space for people and make it into instead a hostile, polluted heat desert where only cars can live comfortably. They don't pay taxes. They serve a litany of environmental externalities for surrounding communities. They represent ongoing financial burdens and maintenance, snow removal, salting, and infrastructure. And despite the steep cost, they largely sit empty and underutilized. Most of their existence. From past Planning Commission meetings, I know that you share an understanding on this. So I would like to advocate that instead of doing only the minimum of what the state requires for removing parking minimums, we should instead remove parking minimums everywhere across the city. So by abolishing parking minimums citywide, projects no longer get relegated to paving over valuable land and can instead use their judgments and come up with creative solutions to meet their establishment's parking needs. A project is going to be far more aware of the context surrounding their development. Maybe they're near a trailhead. Maybe they're in a walking distance of a residential complex. Maybe they're collaborating with another project to meet those parking needs. This is all context that is ignored by a heavy-handed parking minimum requirement. So as a result, the single bit of code can stifle the innovation and human-centric design that projects might strive for, while further deepening the dependence on cars to get around the city. We're quickly building up a gluttony of parking in Lakewood and making the city inhospitable to the people that live here. Most compelling is that the comprehensive plan has my back on this. So many of the goals are at odds with overbuilding parking, a healthy community, context-sensitive design and development, a safe and connected community for walking, biking, and rolling, a robust and diverse and sustainable economy, and so on. Additionally, we're seeing across the country, more and more cities demanding, disbanding their minimum parking requirements to great success, leading to the very results that the comprehensive plan is begging for. Even our neighbor Denver is looking to abolish minimum parking requirements. So I say we beat them and to it and show all the neighboring cities around us what bold and innovative zoning ordinance changes can look like.
Thank you very much. Questions from commissioners? Questions from commissioners? Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for coming and sharing this with us. My understanding is that on page two hundred and eleven of the proposed zoning ordinance, which is seventeen point eight point one point three J, it currently reads that the residential units within one-quarter mile of transit stations or transit lines identified by the Department of Local Affairs, applicable to Transit Service Area Map, are exempt from the minimum parking requirements of this chapter. And then it goes on to talk about visitor parking limits. So my understanding is that currently, under what is being proposed, anywhere within a quarter-mile of a transit center would not have a parking minimum. But then you're advocating for us to adopt that citywide, not just within a quarter-mile of a transit station, correct?
Correct, yeah. Let's just do it everywhere.
I would love to, at some point in the conversation of this, understand from, and this is probably a staff question, what percentage of the city is not within a quarter-mile of a transit station, so we can have clarity on what exactly, like what specific parts of the city are we talking about in the context of this versus not? And again, this is like, I appreciate you bringing this to us, and it has me thinking we should have a deeper understanding of, okay, well, where specifically is within a quarter-mile of a transit station currently under this proposal? And then maybe we can begin to have a conversation of what additional steps may look like.
Agreed.
It's not really a question, but I appreciate you bringing that to us.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your comment. This is more of a staff question about parking minimums. So I understand that it's being implemented in other cities and that's something that has been successful for housing. And I do see the waste in the parking lots and I understand all of that. I start to struggle with developers coming in, I mean, they would happily not provide any parking if they could. So I guess I'm curious how that works, like in real life. You know, I mean, the idea is wonderful, but I don't know. Can you speak to that?
Surprisingly, the vast majority of projects that we see come in above our minimum parking requirements. So they're not parking to the minimum. The reason for that is the vast majority of development is financed. It's paid for by private equity money, and that money requires parking to give their loans. So parking is provided at a rate higher than we actually require it because of the financing of the projects. So removing our parking requirement won't remove a lot of the new parking. It will, in some instances, projects, the small amount of projects that aren't, that are privately financed or otherwise don't require loans, could have less. But even then, they'll provide some just for market, you know, because they'll need to rent those units or sell those spaces or whatever it is.
Okay.
So there's market realities that don't really get us to zero.
They don't align. The market reality doesn't align.
But by removing the city requirements for it, it allows for that flexibility, and maybe the market can catch up.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Wendy Purcell. Wendy here. Leah Peters. Lee, Lee Peters. Apologies.
I'm Leah Peters. I live in Ward Two in Kiwanis Gardens, which is south of Crown Hill. And like others that have spoken this evening, I very much appreciate some of the laudatory language about preserving neighborhoods and valuing agricultural uses. Unfortunately, the zoning is not consistent with that. I live, my neighborhood is currently zoned R-118. I believe it's the only neighborhood that is. So I'm uncomfortable speaking about all the other neighborhoods, but we've been lumped in with rural lots. And thirteen years ago, we fought like hell to change the proposed zoning so that minimum lot size would match what's in the neighborhood. And we determined, we did data analysis, and we determined that the median lot size was eighteen thousand square feet, which it really is the minimum to have a house and a garage and two horses. To have one horse, you need nine thousand square feet. To have two horses, you need fifteen thousand square feet. The proposed zoning allows a minimum lot size of seven thousand square feet for the rural residential properties. If that happens, if somebody decides to subdivide their lot and let somebody build, you know, divide it into seven thousand square feet, we've lost a horse property, another horse property, probably forever. And it's gotten to the point where every horse property is essential. So I would, I would love to have more, more, more of a chance to, you know, figure out what's right for everybody else. But just speaking for Kiwanis Gardens and R-118, I would like to keep the zoning as it is, but I would have to say seven thousand square feet doesn't sound right for any rural residential properties. I also, that's my, that's my primary concern. I'm also perplexed about the maximum house sizes. I don't understand why rural properties would allow a bigger house. I mean, the goal stated in the plan is small residential units in large lots. So why, just because we have large lots, to me, it doesn't make sense to say we should have bigger houses, thirty-two-hundred-and-fifty-square-feet houses, you know? So don't do it. I agree with comments you've heard about the setbacks. And with the median lot size of eighteen thousand square feet in Kiwanis Gardens, fifteen-foot setbacks would significantly interfere with the paddocks that you would have on your property. In the winter, if you don't have much time to go to a park trailer someplace, you know, you want to do some training or riding in your paddock, that's dead space. And, you know, depending upon how big the containment facility is.
I am testing my colleague's patience, because I tend to not cut people off even though their time has expired. So my apology, and so if you could just quickly wrap up.
Yeah, I have, I have submitted comments on all of these issues, just to run them off. I'm also a little bit concerned about the reuse, because you can have some very big agricultural buildings, and if they're, you know, there's a huge, huge barn in my neighborhood, and it might not be appropriate. And, and, yeah, I hate your maps. I couldn't make head or tail of them.
All right. Thank you. Colleen Eymann. Okay. Leanne Thompson. Terry Johnson. Eleanor Granis. Okay. That is all the names I have. Are there others that would like to speak to the zoning? Whoever will, we'll start with you.
I will, because I want to speak for the kids.
Okay.
So my name is Kelly Lee Shaw, and I'm in the Daniels Park area. One thing you all are less educated on is we have the CSU Extension Office, Jeffco 4H. Why are we trying to get rid of that? You talked about the chickens. The 4H kids learn how to raise their chickens, grow gardens, raise beef and goats and sheep to donate or sell for education. My kid donates her food that she grows to the homeless. Then we have Westerners. If we keep taking away our zonings, we won't have these kids who are going to learn. They don't, they don't do sports. They don't do a lot of things. But they do learn how to do public speaking, standing up for what they need in the public eye, and they do community service. A lot of people do not see this, and we have it in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for commissioners? Thank you so much. Others that would like to, please. All right.
Hi, I'm Hillary. I live over by, I'm Hillary.
If you can get to the mic.
Hi, I'm Hillary. I live over in Alameda Community, I'm guessing District Three. I'm with the Alameda Community Homes group as well. Partly just want to reiterate the concern of, you know, not having, not being notified. We've been kind of an established group for a while, even though we modified the name within the last year and a half, it's been around. And just not having that kind of communication, apparently flyers should have gone to mails, sorry, should have gone to our mail. But again, I just want to support the residential, single-family home option. Thanks.
Thank you. Wait till you get to the mic. Thanks.
Hello, everyone.
All right.
My name is Ruben Graciano. I live at four through three South Hoyt Street in the Alameda Homes community. I'm also opposing the zoning as it was before a couple hours ago, you know, to allow the sixty-feet structures with incentives to build up higher to ninety-six. I understand that there's a proposal now, I think a couple hours ago, moving that to mid-form, which kind of seems like a backpedaling thing, and I don't know if that's because we have community input here showing up today. But it's great to see my neighbors here. You know, I oppose that, and I would like to see single, you know, the low-form residential for a couple reasons. I wanted to, it should mirror the community that's already there. As you can see, there's older people here. They are the original owners in some of these homes. They've spent their whole lifetime forming this community, raising kids, and the younger generation has moved in. We're following that same model. We would like to continue to build this community as is, putting in these up to ninety-six-feet structures or even these mid-form residential structures that I still would like to know a couple things about. I mean, is there incentives for, green incentives for that to grow higher too in the mid-forms? Because I understand you said thirty feet. I would like to see it at that single form. One thing I would also like to acknowledge is that homes in that community sell fast, real fast. And if we have the low forms, sorry, low-form, sorry, I think the residential zoning in there, those homes are going to sell quickly. But we all know why that's not developed, and it's profits. Milestone wants to maximize profits. So they're willing to hold out all these years and take two and a half million out of our community, out of our schools, out of our social programs, out of our infrastructure, because they cut out Alpha once a year. They don't water it, they don't seed it, they don't work that land. So my ask is that we habit model the neighborhood that's already there. I'd also like to note, like I said, that community sells fast. If homes are up against Alameda, they're going to sell quickly. We have homes in that community right now that border some of these streets that sell very fast and very quickly. And we have open houses throughout the summer all the time as this community starts to change. Another thing I would like to recognize is the traffic is horrendous during AM and PM rush hour. And if you pack people in there, because Milestone wants profits, and I understand that there's a need to have housing for people in our, in our community, but if you pack people in there, people are going to be hurt at those intersections. I think it was Andy that put it, you know, we can't have signal lights there. There's this, it's between two signal lights or can't be there. Someone's going to get hurt. I mean, I've seen it so many times, people honking, people having to swerve into the middle there. So my main thing is safety around that piece, and I'd really like this neighborhood to just mirror the neighborhood that's already there. Milestone, we don't want to guard Milestone. We don't want to keep people out. We want this community to grow. But they want it to reflect the community that a lot of these original homeowners that are here have built and put their whole lives into working, so. My only question for after, I know I can't ask Mr. Parker any questions, is just if there is, if it is approved to be a mid-form residential, are there incentives to build up higher? My, my request would just to be low-form, just like everyone else here today. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two lights on, Commissioner O'Neill and Commissioner Williams. Are those old lights? They're off. Thank you so much.
You don't want to talk to me, guys? Appreciate your time.
All right. And, yes.
Sir, I just have a couple things I'd like to insert if I could come up.
Absolutely.
I'm Joan Wire, and I live on South Holland Court. And I have a couple of things that haven't really been addressed or raised. One is the approval by the ditch company. Before any development can be done on that milestone property, they have to, you have to run it by them, and they have to approve that development. And I don't see how that's in any of the current flow. I don't know if you can address that or if anyone could address that. But I spoke with Peter Aker, and he said that nothing can happen until the city contacts the ditch company and they get a detailed development plan that they can say, yes or no, or this needs to be done to accommodate the underground water that runs through there. So this hasn't been raised before, to my knowledge. The other thing is just basically sort of mirroring what other people have said in terms of, there hasn't been an opportunity for residents to really speak about their situation, because they didn't know about it. There's been no neighborhood meetings, nothing. And, you know, that's a concern to a lot of us, is this is going to try to be pushed through without any input available from, from the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? I think we have another gentleman coming down.
Okay, so my daughter owns a property.
If you could start with your name and...
My name's Phil Baker. My daughter owns a property in Linda Vista. Actually, we're both owners, but she lives there. And it's just a tad short of an acre. I live in Costa Rica. I am a farmer, actually, coffee. And I'd like a fallback position here. So we're wondering if we can split that property now. I don't know if this is the right place to ask. Planning told me, hey, they're having a meeting, come here, ask them. So what I'm wondering is, it's R-112, and it has one-hundred-foot frontage. And I'm wondering, are those frontages going to be changed when it switches to, I believe it's going to be urban?
I don't know if staff is able to answer that quick question. I am wondering, though, if you might, if you have a particular property, you may have more than just one question. I'm wondering if it might make sense to sit down with staff and go through all of your potential questions, but let's see if they have an answer to that. Will the frontage be changed from the R-112? Mr. Rice or Mr. Parker?
Generally, with the new districts, the frontages are decreasing. I need to look specifically. For some reason, I'm thinking seventy-five. So to go through a different scenario, I would not recommend doing it here. But, yes, so if they had a hundred-foot lot and the lot width drops to seventy-five, he still couldn't physically split the lot, because you need a hundred...
It's a two-hundred-foot lot.
Then you could split the lot.
So you do, you're pretty sure we'll go to seventy-five?
I'll look it up. I need an address, and we could do that. So we can do this outside of the hearing, please.
Yeah, that probably is the most useful for you, is to have... is to have, they even have a planner of the day that you can go and...
You know, I talked to them and they said, no, no, we don't want to discuss any of that. Go talk to you guys.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, above their pay grade, I guess. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good.
Hello, Planning Commission. My name is David Thormitsgard and I'm a resident of Ward Three. I'd like to start off with saying that I am in favor of maintaining our agricultural heritage and making sure people can do what they would like to do on their land as long as there being good stewards of the animals and their neighbors as well. I would also like to say that I think the milestone thing is kind of weird. Like, wouldn't we want, if the zoning that it's currently zoned as is going away, why don't we try to match what is close to what it is right now? Which if half of its are too, maybe we should go closer to that than like a, just more mid-form, I think. I also wanted to talk about some of the, people made comments about like, well, what are the pitfalls of doing this? Have we considered all the possibilities? And why do we need to change anything? I, I'd like to flip that and say, what are the pitfalls of not changing anything? And I think the planning director made an observation that some people might not have heard, which is currently you could build a lot bigger house on many of the lots in Lakewood, something that wouldn't fit in at all with the surrounding community and then pack as many people in there as, say, one, right? 16,000-square-foot house. You only need a 50-square-foot bedroom or some, something for two people. You could fit a lot of people in there. So I think that moving towards this form-based thing actually like mitigates some of those unintended consequences that not changing our zoning will have with the new state laws. So I think you guys are on the right track. I think this is a zoning ordinance that reflects many of the current philosophies that we're seeing in, in our urban planning. I don't know what you call it, planning in general, right? And parking things, I think parking restrictions are valuable in some cases. In some cases, they aren't. I don't think we have to get rid of them everywhere. Maybe there's like a middle ground. It sounds like we could be a little more aggressive in that regard. Someone mentioned that some of those like commercial, but not like commercial hardcore commercial ME, I think it was called. It wasn't effective. And maybe parking had something to do with that. Maybe we want to think about, are there ways we could encourage smaller businesses to be able to develop in Lakewood without having to like burden them with these parking requirements, right? So those were kind of my thoughts. I think I got them all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for commissioners? Thanks so much. Do we have anyone else? Okay. Sure. Okay.
My name is Barry Roberts. I live at 424 South Independence Court in Lakewood, Ward Three. I live adjacent to the milestone property. This is a little bit of deja vu for me because 20-some years ago, I spoke in front of the city council in this spot, opposing the development of that property. I agree with, there's been some eloquent speakers tonight on, of the opposition. There are so many reasons. I, I wonder, first of all, if there's been a traffic study done on the ancillary traffic that's going to be coming in and out of that area if it's rezoned? Because if you have a work-to-live situation where somebody's running a barber shop, pardon me. I'm not Italian. If somebody owns a barber shop in that area, if it's a live-work or, I, I don't know. We've gone through so many things. They, they wanted to build a grocery store. The west end of this property is zoned business. They wanted to put a grocery store there, King Supers, Albertson's, I've forgotten, which then next came a retirement center, which some, some of us did not oppose, but it was opposed. We love our neighborhood. It, it's convenient to going to the mountains. It's a convenience to going downtown. I love the people. We've lived there quite a few years now. I'm one of the old ones. And sensibly, that needs to be kept. The zoning needs to be kept as it is so that we can have single-family homes. We realize that it's going to be developed. But if you build too many units there, tall buildings or whatever, then the only way in and out is Hoyt. And we don't want a ride-in, ride-out situation. Some would say we had to run them up to the service road along Kipling and go out Adenbrook Park. Ms. Adenbrook used to be our neighbor. And when she reached an advanced age, she sold the property. She used to be right across the street from us. I understand why she sold it. Security and old age is important. But I think she would not be pleased with the way some people want to develop that land. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Yes. Then you can...
Good evening, Council. My name is Eleanor Granis. I've passed twice and I've thought about some things at a deeper level. I have the opportunity to ride to work. I've been told, don't do it. It's dangerous. That's the intersection of Alameda and Kipling. So my other question is, is what's a reasonable distance to walk to get to urban transportation? Is it a mile, two miles, mile and a half? Half-mile? What's reasonable? If we're landlocked in a little neighborhood, I happen to live in Belmar Gardens. I can't park at the city council building here. I could catch the nine bus downtown. Takes me an hour to get downtown if I ride the bus. If I ride the rail, if I drive backwards and park at the park and ride, it'll take me 15, 20 minutes to drive backwards as if I were driving to like the hospital and then ride downtown for another 30 minutes or whatever it takes. I don't know. But if I happen to work over near the hospital and I want to ride, I don't think I can ride on the sidewalks. I don't think it's safe to drive on the streets, especially Kipling or Alameda, trying to cross that intersection. So if you do happen to put denser housing there where there's limited access, it's gonna make it less safe. Riding on garrison, people don't ride. You put those new little cute things up there, I've had encounters trying to knock over the pole coming out of my neighborhood because it's too tight. If a car's trying to turn left and a car's trying to go right, you can't go through the, you can't stay in the lines. You have to go way around. So these are some of the side effects that I've seen. I do like the idea of riding to work. I wish it were safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Rex Dallas. I'm part of the Iber neighborhood. I live on one of the large lots, a little over an acre. So the animal concerns are dear to my heart. And I didn't notice anybody mention roosters. And I know people just naturally say they don't like roosters because they're noisy. But I just wanted to put in a plug for our roosters that you don't eliminate them out of the... Because I think they've gotten forgotten. The boys got forgotten. So please, save our roosters. Let's see. I think we need to zone for the children. We're kind of forgetting that most people say, I want to start out in apartments. But then they want a home like ours, even smaller than, than what I have. But we need to zone for the children. And they're the ones that are gonna be taking over here in the next few years. And I don't want to see our heritage farms and lots like mine go away. We need, the rest of the city will probably start coming to visit us because nobody will be left anywhere else in the other parts of the city that are able to have animals and farms. So save it for the kids. I was, this isn't exactly for this, but it's the carbon neutral versus the net zero. And there is a difference. Carbon neutrality is about carbon. And the net zero, the greenhouse gases, include all the other gases. So don't let somebody say that that's the same thing. It's not. And you can look it up. Just look up net zero greenhouse gases. And that might be a concern to us because there's some company that we know that releases gases that the neighbors have been up in arms about for a while. And so don't let our new plans and our rules lump those two things together. Make sure that the one you pick is the one you're zoning for. I think that's it.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Thank you. Is there anyone further that would like to make comment at this hearing? I am not seeing anyone else. So we will close the public portion of the comment. And again, this is the first hearing where we're taking public comment. There will be a long period of time of thought, reflection, drafting, suggestions, whatever you want to provide to the commission before our next hearing on the zoning code, which would be May 21st. And now, the poor staff, who often has very many late nights, now needs to hear questions from commissioners. And we'll start with Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question for staff. Hopefully, you're prepared to answer something like this. It's been mentioned tonight about the height incentives in our mixed-use zone districts. So it suggested that, that there is in fact, you can stack the incentives to get from a 60-foot height to a 96-foot height in the, I guess, the MRU zone, whatever the milestone was being remapped to. Can someone on staff confirm if that math works? I, I was not certain if that was actually correct.
I think we'd have to look into it more.
Yeah. My, my understanding of, there's an incentive that's generally applicable, I think, to the mixed-use zones of one story of height if you're like LEED certified or have a certain number of affordable units or meet certain energy efficiency requirements. But I thought the number was 12 feet. So again, I was trying to find it in, in the zoning draft and, and couldn't find exactly where that section is. But I, I, if my, I was actually reading that section and its revisions just a few days ago. So I was pretty sure the number was 12. So if I'm reading that right, I, I don't know how you get from 60 to 96. But there might be other incentives I'm missing.
Commissioner Buckley, I'll, I'll look and come back to you. It's in Article Five. It's a height incentive. Right now, we have one for LEED and one for...
Affordable, affordability, yeah.
I think we're proposing a third for sustainability. And I believe, the way they're written, since we add a third one, you could add them together. So 36, 60 is 96. But I need to, I need to check that there are no changes to the proposal that wouldn't add them.
Oh, okay. So you're suggesting it could be like, if you do each of these three things, it's 12 feet per thing you do? So that, then that does get to 96? Okay, I just wanted to understand how that worked. So thank you. And, and I guess I'll clarify too. This is an incentive that's pertinent only to mixed-use zones, I think, right? So like the RM zone, just hypothetically, does not have that incentive, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thanks.
I, I do need to, I, I've looked in more to the height limits in the RMF zone. And I do apologize, there are two separate heights. There's one for multiple buildings on a lot and one for a single building on a lot. The 35 feet I quoted is multiple buildings on a lot. If you only have one building on a lot, the height is 45 feet. So I apologize for not missing that before. There are two, two separate heights.
Thanks for that clarification as well. Yeah, just appreciate having the, the facts correct when we're having this discussion. Thanks.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair. My first question here is surrounding... Well, I have, I have a couple questions here, actually. My first one is, we've had a lot of questions about protecting property to ensure that it can continue to have a neighborhood or an area that has large lots that can support, you know, large animals like horses and other types of agriculture. My question is, is can you help us understand, is there a way, isn't, is there, isn't there a way for a current property owner to protect their lot long-term through like a conservation easement or some other process that would protect their lot long-term? Does that currently exist in, in Lakewood?
I don't think it's Lakewood-specific, but there are a lot of ways that you can restrict the future use of your land, conservation easements, deed restrictions. There, there are things that you can do to your own land to restrict what happens on it in the future.
So I just want to just really make sure that I understand this. So any, if I owned a multi, a two-acre lot and I wanted to make sure that it continued to remain a two-acre lot after I'm gone, there are mechanisms that already exist for, for residents and for owners of that property to ensure that that is the case, right?
Absolutely.
So the question before us is not whether or not a, a property owner can continue to maintain their lot in the way that it exists now because that already is an option their lot in the way that it exists now, because that already is an option that's on the table for folks. The question is, is whether or not this commission should be compelling other people, other neighbors to maintain their lot in the same way. Is that correct?
That sounds right.
Okay. Thank you. That's my first set. Chair, can I have some other ones if we can keep going? My other question regarding the milestone property, several folks came up and talked about lack of communication, a mailing notification about different things. I'm curious, can you clarify for us when a neighborhood meeting is required and when it's not? And maybe shed some light on what may have happened there?
So neighborhood meetings are required for quasi judicial rezonings. That's a rezoning on a single piece of property. Right now, we are, we collectively all are looking at, you know, rewriting, making major updates to the zoning code, including major mapping updates across the city. So that's the distinction. This is a this is a larger effort that can or doesn't have to include the milestone property and others. But the proposal includes literally thousands of properties across the city.
So to repeat back, the only time that a neighborhood meeting is required in the under current law and current zoning is when a single property is going to be rezoned, not the adoption of a full new zoning ordinance, which is why residents didn't get that kind of notification?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I did have a question about height limits. It sounds seems like that was maybe already answered, so I appreciate that. I think we have covered most of the horse pieces. My only clarification here that I just want to plain and simple on this is that there is nothing in this zoning rewrite that would prevent the riding of horses in any of our parks, specifically the ones referenced, such as Addenbrook and Belmar Parks. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a question about the 15-foot setback for paddocks and corrals and things like that and horse properties. What was the what's the thinking behind that? What's the purpose of that?
So you heard from the equestrian community this evening. What staff has heard over the course of years and years and years is, my neighbor has a horse, they put their facility right up next to the rear property line, right next to my property. I have flies, I don't like the odors, on and on and on. And there's nothing in the ordinance that regulates odor, per se, besides the nuisance code. So what you haven't heard tonight is all the neighbors that don't necessarily like the adjacent to the animals to their property lines.
Okay. So follow up to that, would it be, first of all, if any, any footage is not going to prevent flies or odor? I mean, that's just, I mean, I understand it's a courtesy and a response to non animal owners, and I understand that. That seems valid and it's an effort. But I'm wondering if there isn't a way towards such a restriction on if your property is adjacent to a non farm or animal property, that then there's a 15-foot or whatever footage setback? Or is that not easily to implement? I mean, I don't know. It just seems like I grew up on a farm. There's, there's a lot of reasons to share a fence with your neighbors. So it makes a lot of sense. I'm just curious if there's any wiggle room there for things like that.
Let me repeat your question back. So I think what I heard you say is that if you have two properties that are adjacent to each other that have animals, there's no setback. And and I think we could tweak the language to do that. One of the issues, and so and once those are permitted, the fence permit is issued, off they go, they're nonconforming, they can stay there for a very long time. What we've also run into is you'll have a property where horses were maintained for a long time and then they go away, right? And it's kind of interesting because we have a whole book where we have horse properties that have been listed in this book that these, based on zoning changes, years before I even started working here, they're, they were specifically called out that they could continue to have horses. I don't know what that was. One of those goes away and comes back. We don't have any issues because we have documentation. It's the other properties that maybe they don't have the lot size, they're keeping more than one horse or three horses or whatever they're allowed, and then they go away and they come back. And then a lot of times it is disputes between neighbors. Do you put that, do they get to have horses back or not, right? So then there's this kind of enforcement, who's, who's, who's telling the truth kind of sort of thing?
Mm hmm.
And we, we don't really have the resources to do that. So I would recommend you can, we could write that provision in where you've got the two properties and they're together, and then they just become nonconforming and move on. It wouldn't resolve issues when property owners change, horses go away, come back.
Right.
One other thing to add to this, Lakewood is a complaint based enforcement mechanism, right? We only enforce things like this if a neighbor doesn't want the horses next to them. So if there are two horse owners that abut each other that want to share a fence, we're not going to know about it, we're not going to enforce it.
Mm hmm.
Right? That's, that's their choice to not turn each other in.
Right. Thank you.
This hopefully is a real easy one. There are a number of proposed changes to historic preservation that are included in the zoning code. I understand these have been vetted and by the Historic Sites Commission. I'm just wondering if there are anything of note in there that we should know. What are these changes and why are we doing them?
Thank you, Commissioner Matthew Swibert with Comprehensive Planning. I also staff the Historic Preservation Commission. So just briefly, and I can go into this in more detail if you, if it's not adequate. But the initial Article 11 was adopted in 2016. The state issued a model certified local government ordinance in 2019. The commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, proposed these changes in the end of 2023. Mostly, it's to align with the state model ordinance. It makes some various technical changes that are not, that are policy neutral. The other provision would be to move the definitions, which are currently in Article 11, to Article 14, where the rest of the definitions are. The commission did review this March 18th of this year. And although they don't have a formal role in zoning, they advised that the proposal go forward, which is the red line version that you see. So it is various technical changes recommended by the Preservation Commission to align with the state model ordinance, and it doesn't include any, any, any major policy changes.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to highlight a few things and not looking for answers. I'm sorry, Mr. Rice.
Before you go on, I wanted to, I didn't want to forget Commissioner Buckley.
Sure.
May I follow up on that? So if you use the numbering from the entire ordinance, it's on page 136, or it's in Article 5 on page 531, and I won't read the whole thing, but it says, for each of the following incentive. So they are additive. And then we added one, so there's a third one that deals with energy offsets or building electrification. So that would be 36 total.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I did scan through that sometime in the last week and missed that they were additive. Good, good thing to point out. Thanks.
So one of the big things that we've talked about repeatedly is, is clarifying that the comp plan is advisory and the zoning ordinance is regulatory. And I do see that some changes are in this draft. I still think it can be done even more clearly. I would suggest in 17.1.3, literally say, the comprehensive plan is advisory and not regulatory. And if you want to have some notion of, you know, land use decisions being reviewed, then, you know, by what standard? What does that mean to review? Is it, do they have to be in substantial compliance? Or is it merely a notification that review has happened? So I would really love to see that clearer. And Ms. Stenick, I don't know if you had a thought on that as well.
Yeah, that'll be done in the legal review. I've already addressed that. But you'll see that version before the May 12 hearing.
Terrific. And then we've also talked about just making sure as we change the definitions about director to chief, that we also do the other provisions that make that all align as it relates to the department.
I appreciate that. Yeah, we put some thought into that. So right now, what we've done is just define director in the, in the definitions to include the new title, rather than going through every section. We may still go back and change every instance of director. The issue is, director of planning exists throughout the municipal code everywhere.
Right.
And so a couple, yeah, we've still got to resolve that. But for right now, we've just handled that by defining it.
And I saw that, and I think that's an improvement. I just, I, director is all over our municipal code, and it would be nice if it aligned with what the actual department is intended to be now. I want to highlight, and no one else has brought this up, but strongly support the new requirement for a neighborhood meeting adjacent to park or open space. That, I think, is a wonderful addition. That really is something that you all have produced that is responsive to what we've heard from the community. There's also, I think, the 45-degree bulk plane spacing against a park. Those are two things that I hope don't get lost in the shuffle, that those are directly responsive to what people are requiring or asking us to do. Here's kind of the big concept, though, that I want to make sure that we're really thinking about over the next month. Walkability in neighborhoods is massively important from the comp plan. So we've got to be thinking about every change in the zoning code that increases walkability. Similarly, we talk in the comprehensive plan about diversity of housing types, as opposed to build all the same single family homes that, you know, are next door. Comp plan doesn't say that. It wants us to focus on diversity of housing types. It also wants us to look at promoting income diversity in housing and in neighborhoods. Those three concepts don't come through to me as clearly in the zoning code as I think they should. And that's something that I'm going to be giving a lot of thought to, and I hope you all do as well. One of the things that I think is very positive is this notion of allowing small retail in neighborhoods. I think that it's important that it not just be retail, it should also be personal services. So it's not just the bodega, it might be the barber shop. But creating opportunities for people to get their food, to get their services, to go see their veterinarian, to go to the dentist, those are the things that will drive walkability. And I understand with the speed that we're undertaking these changes, you know, we're trying to red line only as much as we need to. But as I look at our existing housing types, I see a lot of, you know, maintain the physical character, protect the scale, the character, the unique appeal, incrementally maintain, control. Those things may not be consistent with some of the changes that would increase walkability. And I don't know if you have a thought on that, Chief, but I just, that is something that I feel did not come through in concrete enough way.
So I don't, I don't have an answer on your walkability question. But in terms of diversity of housing type and promoting income diversity, I think the changes to what we're single family neighborhoods are going to get us a long way there. So we're now, you know, limiting the box that you can build in these zones, but taking away or adding, adding flexibility to what you can do in that box, right? No longer limit to just one traditional single family home. It could be a duplex, a triplex in there. You could, under new state law, even without any changes, you could have an SR, you know, a single room occupancy and rent out bedrooms. So I think there's a lot of affordability, diversity, and unit type diversity that can come from these changes.
Yeah. And I can see that. I am wondering if it maybe needs an extra boost. Because it, it might just wind up being, you know, three units, but they're all 1,200 square feet or something, and there's not a studio. And I don't know if there's a way to engineer that, but I'm curious about that, if that makes sense. Under the supplemental standards, that's where we have the business, the 750 square feet of a business in a residential area. I'm curious where the 750 square feet came from, because it struck me as perhaps a little too restrictive. But there might be a compelling reason for that. But I would be curious where that, if there's some logic or analysis behind.
Not significant analysis. It was, it was designed to be something fairly small to allow somebody, you know, who makes their own fishing flies to, you know, sell them out of their house, but not big enough that a corporation could come in and open a 7-Eleven in a neighborhood. So it could be, it could be bigger or smaller.
Yeah. I, that's one that I do want to give, I just wanted to highlight it because I want to give more thought to it. It struck me as it might be one size does not fit all, and it might be too small. Also, in supplemental standards, on the ADUs, I just want to make sure I understand, we had to do that because of the state statute. It looks like ADUs now are only detached because of the other change on the number of people and units within a structure?
Yeah, there's really no need now to allow an ADU in the primary structure because we allow whatever you, whatever configuration you want in that primary structure.
That, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure we weren't making it more difficult to do an ADU.
Yep.
It should be, okay. I did wonder, under the supplemental standards, we kept in limitations related to that subsection six and eight. One of them's parking. What was the other one? The other one had to do with the ADU having to be behind the front plane. I am wondering if in light, I mean, we went fairly far in, in what the city council approved in terms of ADUs, but I am wondering if maybe this is an opportunity to also eliminate those two, because they don't have a rational connection in this new environment. The parking standards, I think particularly, not, no, no slight to Commissioner Buckley that came up with a very artful way to deal with that. But I am wondering now if it might be an opportunity to eliminate a parking requirement on an ADU. Yes?
Sorry to interrupt, Chair. I just want to let you know, I did make some adjustments to that particular, especially, especially the parking, to make it in line with the state statute. So I will, there will be proposed red lines for that section that the commission can consider.
Terrific. Thank you. 17.5.2.3, minimum lot sizes. This commission's talked a lot about R1.0, and we had made a recommendation to city council. We've heard the consultant talk about why minimum lot size still might be relevant. I see this as the opportunity for us to break out of what has been the albatross around the neck of traditional zoning since day one. You make land expensive by requiring minimum lot sizes, so long as we have the dimensional standards that give people protection on height, on setbacks, on open space, those sorts of things, I'm really wondering if it's not time to just cut our ties to minimum lot size as a effective way to enforce land use. So I throw that out. I might be alone in that. But that is something that I'm going to want to dig down into a little more deeply. And related to that, I am among those who feel that the maximum building size, while I get that we've got to shrink the 18,000, 16,000 down, I get that. That makes perfect sense. But I am wondering if the current numbers are perhaps too low, and maybe we would want to go a bit higher. And I'm going to be thinking about that. One question, specific question, cottage court. I have to confess, I did not understand cottage court was inserted in one of the tables. How do we think about, what, what does that mean?
So that means more than one primary building on a lot.
Okay.
So if you, if you think about, if you, if you stick right now with the thought of minimum lot sizes, and you've got a 3,000 square foot lot size, you can have one primary structure. But if you've got an existing lot that's 10,000 square feet, one option is to split that into three, you know, lots of just more than 3,000 square feet. Or this code allows you to put now multiple homes on that lot without splitting it up.
Ah ha. So it's four circumstance where the lot is not subdivided.
Right.
What would be the limitation on the number?
It's by lot size. So, and if you give me some time, I can go find that section.
Is that the one to two and the three to four?
No.
Um.
Forgive me while I.
And that's, and again, this is not something that needs to be answered today. I just wanted to make sure I was thinking about that the right way. And the way you just described it makes sense. Because, you know, part of what we want to do is not compel people to go through a subdivision process to chop up all these little pieces. If there's a way to get additional affordable housing on the single lot, the cottage court idea seems like a great one.
So the standard is in 17.5.2.5.1, which says each lot in a residential low form or mid form zone may have one primary building. However, lots that exceed the minimum lot width by at least 50 feet may have additional primary buildings, provided they have additional 50% of the minimum lot area for each additional primary building.
Okay.
So if you have a 3,000 square foot lot minimum, at 4,500 square feet, you can have two buildings. At 6,000 square feet, you can have three buildings, and so on.
This sounds like an SAT question.
There may be a simpler way to write that. Maybe Lauren can help me.
Okay. Are we, is that new language? Are we prohibiting turf grass?
Yes. So we, I believe right now, there's a reference in the code that doesn't specifically prohibit turf grass. I think we look at it as the percentage of living ground cover, right? And so, yes, turf grass is something that we don't want to see. I know there's, you'll hear there's benefits to watering and so forth, but then there are environmental issues as well.
Yeah.
Producing the material, the heat, the, the fact that you have to buy a really high quality turf grass, or it doesn't wear well, right? So then you end up with something that curls up in your front yard and, and is not maintained. So the, the short answer is yes.
So where, there's actually two. So we're, there's actually two references to turf, but I thought they were different. One is the no artificial turf, and I have questions about that because I have seen people do landscaping that incorporates artificial turf that looks great and it, and it wears well. But then there's also a prohibition on turf grasses, which I think is getting to the lawn, the traditional lawn notion.
Right.
Okay.
And water usage.
Which is incredibly important because we waste a ridiculous amount of, of water on that. I am wondering if that still allows, and I think it's somewhere else in the code, that allows native grasses in a zero scape, I think.
Yes.
So I think that that is something that we obviously want to make sure that we preserve. Last one, parking minimums. As was correctly pointed out, we have a state statute that requires us to get rid of them in certain distances to transit, but we have heard time and time and time again that it is an incredible cost that is, other than land and building materials, is the single largest impact that makes housing unaffordable. I would be someone who'd be interested in flipping the script and have it be no requirement unless, you know, staff makes a determination that there has to be. You know, we certainly have circumstances where the parking study that the city recently did, that there were some clear areas that were problems, but the vast majority of the city were found not to have problems. So I would like to explore that a bit more. That are just kind of my issue spotting that I would like to throw out there. Commissioner Williams.
Thanks. Yeah, I took weird notes and realized I had like three more questions that I had at the bottom here. The first one is in relation to this parking minimums piece. I tend to agree that moving away from parking minimums is good for a community and for a city. My question is, and this was, do, and this is really in follow-up to the public comment around this, but do we know what properties in Lakewood are within a quarter mile of transit and would be, would fall under this removal of parking minimums in the current proposal?
We do. There is a map that was shown in the presentation I did online. You can also, we can send out the link to the state map that exactly identifies what, what those boundaries are and where those apply.
That'd be great, yeah.
And Commissioner O'Neill asked the question, percentage. This is not completely accurate because we're using the two state numbers that we have, and I actually have a staff member working through all the calculations for the land that needs to be removed. But based on the state number of roughly 8,000 acres, the city of Lakewood is roughly 29,000 acres in size, it's about 20, 27 and a half, 28% of the land area in Lakewood is within a quarter mile of a transit area.
Thank you. I tend to, my sort of philosophy on this is that parking minimums are not great. That being said, eliminating parking minimums or eliminating parking in high-density housing without pairing that with transit creates additional problems specifically for addition, for adjacent neighborhoods, which many comment, like members of the public commented on tonight. I agree with the Chair that eliminating parking minimums where possible is good. I just want to make sure that as we do that, we're, we're very thoughtful about our approach to, so that we make sure that we are incentivizing development in places where we can pair that with transit and not sort of just creating a situation where just nobody has access to parking, and then they're parking on, on, you know, four blocks away and creates additional problems, right? So I just, that's sort of like, I just want us to be really aware of, of how we approach that, and go ahead.
Maybe there's a middle ground. So our, our existing code that we're working under today has nuanced parking requirements based on your context, right? So we have a lower requirement in transit areas and a higher requirement in suburban and a median, in, in urban. Obviously, the areas that are being exempted by the state are the places where we require the least amount of parking now.
Right.
And we won't be requiring any under the new code, under the new state law. Perhaps the middle ground is not to exempt across the board, but take those areas that are not exempted, but now require much higher rates and lower those rates. So there, those, the suburban areas, we're requiring one and a half spaces now for a unit, maybe it's one. And actually, now that I've said that, I should point out, one of the changes in this was that for remaining areas that still have residential parking requirements, we converted that to a square footage rather than a unit count, which actually more closely correlates to the number of people and cars that actually live in it. But that's neither here nor there. We could talk about lowering those numbers.
Yeah, I agree that I would love to see a, a parking minimum rule that goes further than the state, but also that still make sure that we're not sort of arbitrarily making these kinds of decisions. My next question is around the methane gas appliances and hookups. Can you please clarify how this current zoning code update, and I know I'm totally putting you guys on the spot here, how this current zoning code update addresses methane gas appliances and hookups in regards to new developments in Lakewood? If anyone like has that off the top of their head, I don't mean to like put you totally on the spot there.
Do you want to take that? Yeah, it, it doesn't specifically address that. One of the things we do through the EDM, we encourage electrification, which you're not then using natural gas products and so forth.
Right.
But it doesn't address it directly.
We also, also have the height bonus for building electrification. So, so, yeah, we have incentives.
Sure.
But requirements.
What, how do you all as staff think about approaching this? Do you, is it? Let me maybe ask a slightly different question. How is it that zoning codes can impact methane gas hookups and in new development beyond just incentivizing electrification, but requiring more sustainable development?
I would posit that traditionally, that's not a function of zoning.
Okay.
Communities that tackle that will do that broadly in their municipal code, right? They'll limit or prohibit or whatever they do. So it's generally not a function of zoning.
It, it, it's a choice, right? And when you're, so you, you, you then use kind of the pricing mechanism to figure all that out, and if you have the natural gra, it's coming from the same provider, Excel, as what we're using local, you can get gas or you can get electricity. In most existing kind of more urban neighborhoods, you've got two options because they've, the lines have been there for years and years and years. As you start to get further and out, you'll, you'll see that you're, you're only either offered an electric option, or the, the price difference is kind of pushing you towards that option. So it, it's, it's not a function of zoning. I don't think we could go in and say you can only build a house that's electric.
I suspected that to be the case, and I am, it's been a long night, and I'm a little tired. So I'd love to make sure that we can square what you just said with what the gentleman and public comment presented to us, which was that there should be some element of zoning, and I don't have an answer to this, I don't think anyone here does right now, but I do want to, I don't want that to slip through the cracks here. I promise this is the last thing. I do just want to clarify in this public forum that this current zoning update guarantees that every single land use in Lakewood will allow for agriculture, horticulture, and basically the TLDR here is the ability to grow vegetables and sell them to your neighbors. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so any parcel of land in Lakewood, you should be able to grow vegetables on your land and sell them to your neighbors, operate a co-op, that kind of thing. None of that will be impacted under the current zoning ordinance.
Right, and we were talking about uses. So if you go to the use table in Article 4 and you look up horticulture, which is specific to plants, that's why we, we went from agriculture or, or farming and changed the uses back in 2012. Horticor, hold, bleh, it's getting late.
Yeah.
Horticulture is a P in all the districts.
Yep.
Which is permitted, so it means it's permitted outright. There were comments about everything should be permitted. The L is a permitted use, so think of it as a P, but you have to do A, B, and C. For instance, as it applies to animals, it's a permitted use for the livestock, but you either have to have so much land to have a critter, you have to have a fence or, or something. So there are things that you have to do in addition to. So, and then accessory means you have to have a primary use, and then you can have this other use to, that goes along with it. But horticulture, I think, is, is a permitted use through all the districts. So you may have an urban farm in the middle of a single-family neighborhood.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. I just, I know that there's been a lot of questions from members of the public who are here and who are not here, right? Like, we've received emails, you've seen comments online, and so I just really want to make sure that we as a commission and members of the public are really all on the same page here, which is that under the new proposed zoning, you are, no matter what zone you're in, you are allowed to like run a small family farm on your property, and you can run a co-op, and you can sell vegetables and such to your neighbors, and that the city wants those kinds of things to be happening in our community. So I just, really important for us to clarify that here tonight. So thank you. I promise I don't have any more questions.
Commissioner Overall.
I know, it is, it is late, and I will be brief. I, I just wanted to thank the, my fellow commissioners for asking great questions. I've learned a lot tonight, and thank you so much to those of you who are remaining in the public. I'm amazed that you're still here at 11:15. Thank you for coming out. This is important. I, I also want to encourage our commissioners to read the Lakewood Advisory Commission's report on essentially proposals on how we can, through the zoning, upgrade how we approach electrification. So it sounds like there are options. I'm woefully, I'm prepared to, to think about those options, but I will be reading this report. Thank you so much for, for all of the research that the Sustainability Committee put into this. One last, just lingering question with regard to the milestone property. It's been suggested tonight that the, by, by addressing a change through this ordinance or this zoning upgrade, that that's sort of an end run or not permitted in fact, because it only impacts this one owner of one property the way that it's currently, that, that the update is currently, is currently made. Is, is that, does that resonate? Can you guys explain what that may be about?
I, I, I think it was just an argument against the process that, that this is undergoing, but as you saw, I mean, there were a dozen properties that I talked about this, you know, earlier this evening, and that's on top of the hundreds of ME properties and dozens of IRDs. So there's a lot, and, and literally thousands of residential properties that are getting new residential zoning. So this is a complete, not a complete, but a, a very significant remapping of the city with these changes that we're talking about. So it, you know, it's clearly a legislative zoning that follows different processes than an owner coming in and asking to rezone their own property.
Is there any thing that you can think of that could resemble a, a change in this proposal that will only impact milestone?
I don't understand the question.
Is the milestone property singled out in the, the, in the rezoning proposal as it is right now? I, I just don't know, I don't know where it is on the map. I have to go and look. But is, is there a colored dot that is just milestone?
There's a, I don't know what you mean. Like, there, there's thousands of color changes, and milestone's one of them.
Yeah, so they have a current district designation that this proposal suggests should go away, and therefore you've got to put some other designation on them. And we've seen in the draft one possible one, but there, and we've heard about an alternative one. There may be additional things, but if the designation goes away on the map because the text of the zoning ordinance eliminates that kind of district, then we have to give it another district.
I see.
Allocation.
And we do need to be clear, yeah, we, when we talk about the milestone property, yeah, there's two, two sides of it. Yeah, there's one side that already has mixed-use zoning, and it will get a different mixed-use zoning because we're taking away the ME, and then there's the portion that's currently zoned R2 that's been proposed to be our MRU, but it could be, in fact, we'd like some guidance tonight on what to put in the next draft for...
I am not sure you're gonna get guidance tonight.
So we should leave it as MRU for now?
Well, and I, I would be curious what others think. I, I thought the suggestion to have it be at a lower residential form was a good place to start.
Okay. We can make that change, and then go from there. Now, it's not, it's not a decision by Planning Commission, obviously.
All right. But others may have different thoughts on that, I'm not sure. But I have Commissioner Gribbelyonis and then Commissioner Buckley.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a long list of things to go through, and just to touch on what that property could potentially go in as, in general, I'd just say something that matches the scale of the adjacent neighborhood from a height perspective would be an appropriate place to start. And then I just want to talk about the minimum parking requirements and just propose something to my fellow commissioners that's already being eliminated within a quarter mile of transit. We kind of have a mechanism to fully eliminate parking requirements to the city. If we just increase that to, you know, there, there is a, a distance that would cover the full city, right? But there's also distances in between, so exploring what a half-mile might do in terms of what's a realistic distance to, to travel the pub, public transit, that would justify eliminating the parking would be a, probably a good place to start the conversation.
Commissioner Buckley.
All right, thanks. And thank you to most of my commissioners who have spoken so far. A lot of you did cover observations I had, so I thank you for all that. I'm trying to go through my list now and see what we haven't touched on. I just wanted to thank staff and highlight the enhanced development menu's been updated with a new item for encouraging major site plan applicants to go to the public for an optional hearing and solicit feedback and incorporate it into their project in exchange for EDM points they need anyways. This is an idea the, this Planning Commission worked on in response to a council request like over a year ago for, for that process. So I think this change is a long time in coming, and I'm very happy to see that, that in there. And, yeah, we had very big crowds, similar, like rivaling tonight's crowds for some of those meetings where we were talking about that a year ago, and, and nothing's happened. It's been a while, so I don't know, there may be people out there in the community who have, you know, forgotten we did that or wondering if it's ever gonna happen. It looks like it is happening, so, so thank you. I don't really have any comments, and I think it, it captures well what I, my notes from a year ago said that we were suggesting to do. You know, and all the changes in the zoning code, one thing that was on my list was actually to talk about a thing that's not changing, and I think appropriately not changing. We've had a lot of discussion as a city about, about parkland and how we value parkland and protecting it. I think it's not said enough that our old zoning ordinance allowed parks as a permitted use in every single zone district of the city, which gives the city itself great flexibility for acquiring a parkland anywhere the opportunity arises, and at the same time that any land that the city's ever acquired in its history for parkland or open space purposes, by our zoning ordinance can only be used for park or open space purposes regardless of whatever uses would otherwise be allowed in the district, and that's also staying the same. And I think that's really critical because I, I don't know how many times on this Planning Commission we've heard, and just otherwise in, in the city, I've, I've heard someone make the argument that, you know, our, our parks are going away or somehow being degraded or destroyed or used for some other purpose, and it's, it's simply not true, right? Almost every time someone says that, they're mistaken, and what they maybe actually mean is that a property near a park might have its use proposed to be changed, but it's, it's like never happened in the city's history that like we've gone and like built an apartment on parkland. That's just not... That's just not legal in our zoning, and it continues to not be legal, and it shouldn't be legal. And, and so we are appropriately not changing that, and that's just a, it's a protection that I've lost track of how many times people have asked me and demanded that we need to do, and we've already done it for, like, decades. So, thanks for continuing that. It should be said more often that we do that, because there's just somehow, I don't understand it, but there's just so much confusion about that out there, so I wanted to provide clarity that we're still going to continue to do the thing that people think we should be doing. Yeah, I'll chime in with parking minimums. Actually, probably spent too long, maybe 30, 45 minutes this weekend doing an exercise where I found that DOLA map online of the areas, the 27% of the city where we can't have residential parking minimums, and compared it systematically with our proposed zoning map. And what I found is that for every single mixed-use zone in the city that has a T designation in transit area, they are all within that, right? And every single U designation, the mixed-use urban context, it, it was every single parcel, I think, except for one, that had the U designation, and the whole city was inside that area. I mean, so, it, it wouldn't even change what's legally required, but it would just increase a lot the clarity and usability of the code if we just explicitly said that any mixed-use zone district with the urban or transit context doesn't require residential parking. And, like, that, that maybe sounds big and radical, but it's, it's actually the same thing we already say, it's just to say it in a much, much clearer and more straightforward way, so that everyone doesn't have to go and, and refer to these, you know, DOLA maps. And then on top of that, we have a lot of mixed-use suburban context, and I didn't count it as exactly, but, like, eyeballing it roughly at least half of that, maybe a little more than half, is also in, in, like, the current DOLA map, is an area we can't require it. So a substantial chunk of that's going away. And so for even residential, in mixed-use suburban areas, it's enough where I'm even tempted there, like, I think it wouldn't be too far to say, like, just for simplification, you know, maybe we don't need the parking minimums there either, and it's, it's going to have a, a practical effect in, in arguably very few places. And I think a lot of those places that are far from transit, you know, the, the developers know that, and, and they do want enough parking to, you know, be able to sell their own product, and they do have the lender constraints. And just the context of where we zone MGS lot, it tends to be on old, like, big-box shopping center type subdevelopments on busy arterials, the nature of these places, they're, they're pretty disconnected from, like, the surrounding neighborhoods, and so, like, parking spillover, if you imagine it, it's kind of hard to even imagine being a thing in a lot of these places. Just because of the layout of the lot and the street network, it, it would kind of naturally be self-contained. And so, you know, one way, I, I hear some commissioners wanting to maybe push a little further on parking, like, that, that's an idea of how we can go a little further. With, with changing to the, the low-form residential, I noted that the, the new parking requirement becomes one space per thousand square feet above the first 1,500 square feet, right? And so, I think what the intent of that is, is that our old zoning code actually had no parking minimum for single-family homes. And, you know, that's kind of an example of, like, why parking minimums maybe don't always do as much as we think they do, right? Because I, I don't know if I've ever heard people complain that there's no parking at single-family homes. It's, it's kind of silly, like, almost everyone does. Like, what house has been getting built today without a garage and a big driveway, right? But we've not, but we haven't required parking there, yet there's plenty of parking. And so we're trying to match that, but, you know, these square-foot caps per zone, we talked about 2,500 in urban, 3,000 in suburban, you know, so the 1,500 seems a little low. Like, maybe we should just match that maximum cap, because now you build maybe a 2,000-square-foot home, well, that's more than 1,500. Suddenly, you know, that's 500 feet above the first 1,500, and the way the parking requirements in the zoning code work is that if it's a fraction of 1,000 square feet, you round up to the next whole number of parking spaces. So, like, in that way, like, for very small residential developments, I noted we might actually be requiring more parking than we used to. And, like, this is exactly the area where we have a history of never requiring parking, and where, in my history in the Planning Commission, there's never been a complaint about parking. And so, like, why are we adding parking requirements there? It just kind of doesn't make sense, right? The obvious fix there is either, you know, maybe we're moving in the direction of removing parking for residential more broadly and globally and everywhere, and that just fixes it, or at the very least, in those contexts, you know, bump up that minimum square footage that's excluded to, you know, the size of the low-form residential if it's allowed, right? So, yeah. What else did I have? Yeah, that's another thought about parking as well, especially in the mixed-use areas where, you know, Commissioner Kolkmeier was saying, let's push further for walkability. You know, so, I basically already said, all the mixed-use urban and mixed-use transit contexts that exist are not going to have residential parking minimums anyways, because of state law and just how the map falls, right? Well, you know, I think maybe we can look at dramatically lowering or getting rid of the commercial requirements, the zones do. You know, if, if the commercial half of your mixed-use development requires parking and the residential half doesn't, it's still going to create maybe some of these larger parking lots that are a barrier to walkability within a tight-knit, you know, like, transit-oriented development. You know, it's, it's kind of a weird requirement to only require half of our land uses. It's perhaps an incentive in our mixed-use zones to, to even more exclusively build residential. And one complaint I think we've heard consistently for as long as the current zoning code's been in effect for about a decade is that, you know, people would like to see more actual mixing of uses in projects that are built in mixed-use zones. I think if, if parking's not required for the residential side, and parking is required for the commercial side, it's not hard for me to imagine that it's going to, like, exacerbate the trend of, like, you know, more residential. And we do need a lot more housing, that's an important component of housing affordability. But, I, I mean, for walkability, for, I mean, just good, good urban design for that neighborhood feel, like, we do highly value, like, those commercial uses being mixed in. And, you know, I think, especially the, the urban and transit zones, getting rid of the parking requirements for those places, like, it makes sense to balance that out, in my view, so that we do have, like, that organic market demand for a more mixing of uses. So that would be another suggestion I would have of how we could push further on, on the parking topic. Yeah. I hesitate to bring up this kind of bombshell at 11:30, but I do think it's important. I did notice in the, in the definitions in the back that, the definition of university use and student living unit had changed. City Council requested that this commission have a big discussion about that a year ago. The body ultimately voted that we not change that. I, I did vote that we shouldn't change the existing. If this exists, I, if this issue was coming up in isolation, like, the, the current definition we have is, is rather horribly written. You know, it, it targets, you know, usage of, of what a student living unit is by, by who owns it, which is just, as a general zoning principle, something we shouldn't do. And I understand why staff wrote it out. At the same time, there's been, like, a history of, like, legislation and re-legislation on this, there's been a history of litigation, and the litigation, I think, kind of surprised everyone, the city, the city won, and, and the judges declared, well, this is a legitimate use of the city's zoning powers, just saying the university's over here and it's not over there. I don't know. I, I think we're opening up a little bit of a, of a landmine to, to change this, and I think literally everyone hates this definition that exists today, which is, I think, exactly why the neighborhood and the university came to us a year ago and said, don't change it, because somehow miraculously through 20 years of legislating and re-legislating and litigation and more litigation, we got to a point where everyone's just kind of like, all right, we're sick of this, let's accept the status quo. And, and now we're changing the status quo, a year after this body said, don't change the status quo. I'm, I'm really conflicted on this. Like, like everyone else, I hate the, the current definition. I think literally no stakeholder involved has ever liked the current definitions. But that's, like, maybe again exactly why they ought to just be kept, so we can have peace on this issue. Anyways, those are my kind of conflicted thoughts there. You know, if, if we are going to be open to changing it, I would entertain and welcome ideas to maybe get rid of the problematic language that refers to particular property owners in terms of defining what a land use is, yet also clearly maintains the neighborhood spirit of, like, we just want to say the university is this, and that over there is not the university. You know, what are the ways to do that and, and address the neighborhood's concerns? I think a year ago, this commission kind of threw its arms up there, didn't know a good way to define that, which is part of why we all just said, let's, let's leave well enough alone with this current definition. You know, maybe this zoning rewrite and cleanup is an opportunity where we can find a new definition that, like, everyone's more comfortable with, that staff finds more enforceable from a zoning enforcement perspective, that kind of honors the wishes of the neighborhoods better, you know, that's something we can hope and pray, that we don't have a university suing the city over. I know it's a lot to ask, especially this late at night, but y'all have a few weeks to ponder and noodle on it, so I would appreciate, appreciate you doing that, and, and maybe a, a further discussion of that later when we're not all so tired. Again, thank you to Commissioner Kolkmeier and Overall and Williams. I think y'all asked a lot of the other questions I had on my list, so that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any other last thoughts before we move on from this item on the agenda?
Can I ask, may I ask?
Absolutely.
So I, I'm trying to get in my notes what are things that you've asked us just to think about versus what we should put in. We're going to release a new draft on May 7th for your May 21st hearing. I've got a few things that are definitely going to be in it. We're definitely correct the horse livestock mistake. We will have the city attorney's review, which will include the comp plan advisory language and other things. We can add personal services to retail as something that's allowed in, in our zones, that's, that, it makes a lot of sense. We can change the map for Milestone to mid-form residential from, from RMU. I'm trying to wrap my, it sounds like everybody wants some change to parking, I'm trying to wrap my head around what that might be. We, I think it's an easy change to raise the 1,500 limit for, for where we start requiring for residential, but I don't know, obviously we didn't land anywhere, and so maybe we just leave the rest of it as is, and then you can amend it on the 21st. What else? What am I missing that we should make a change in the draft that we published on the 7th?
Commissioner Overall.
Thank you, Chair. The elimination of height incentives on the Milestone property, is, is that up for discussion?
It's not, it, it doesn't apply, so if, if we change it to that RM zone, the height incentives only apply to mixed-use zones. So that would remove height incentives from the part, from the part of the Milestone property that's RM. There's still a part that's mixed-use, but it always has been.
Thank you. And one other is to consider recommendation number two of the Lakewood, of the Sustainability Committee of the, the Lakewood Advisory Commission, which is regarding enhanced development menu.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, of applying it to single-family, to everything?
Correct.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. Is there anything else? Oh, one, one other change that you may, that you are likely to see, we're working with our consultants on Articles 5, 6, and 7, which are all development standards on lots. We may, without changing any of the development standards, we may reorganize how that information is displayed. So, right now, we've got one whole chapter for mixed-use and one whole chapter for residential with a lot of overlap, so expect to see some organizational changes in those without any substantive changes, if that makes sense. And then, we might have some new graphics as well on May 7th. So, I think that's our list, unless you have other things to...
Yeah, I mean, I think that is the list that you've gotten kind of a consensus direction on. I will be thinking about and probably suggesting additional changes as it relates to these through-lines from the comp plan to the zoning code on walkability beyond what maybe we've talked about, income, diversity of housing, and diversity of housing types. I would throw out for the group on ADUs, additionally eliminating that subsection 6 and subsection 8 under ADUs. But perhaps we don't have consensus on that, so that'll just be something I can keep attention to. And then the last two were the notion of minimum lot size potentially going away, which I wouldn't suggest a change in the draft at this point, because I don't know if there's consensus, but I will be talking more about that, along with increases in the maximum building size. And I just mainly wanted to highlight those. And with that, Commissioner Buckley.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kolkmeier. I was just reminded by something you said, I had a question about ADUs for clarifying. The, the supplemental standards for ADUs still have the language that we adopted, like, a year and a half ago, about 1,400 square feet's the maximum size of an ADU. With our new regime of regulating the maximum size of low-form residential properties, is that 1,400 square feet for an ADU in addition to, or is it part of the maximum square footage on a property?
No, so with our, with the new residential districts, we need, we need to start thinking of ADUs only in terms of detached ADUs. Anything in the primary building is just allowed. We don't care how many units you have in that.
So if I have a detached ADU, is that 1,400 feet in addition to my maximum building size, or is it part of the maximum building size?
That's in, so, so you can have your 2,500-square-foot building, and then you can have a 14, a detached 1,400-square-foot ADU.
Okay, provided your lot's big enough and it fits in all the side setbacks and open space requirements and yet, et cetera.
Exactly.
Right, okay, no, that's, that's a good clarification. The reason I'm asking the question is, from reading the code, I, I was not clear on what that is. I think it would be enormously helpful to explicitly state somewhere in the ADU section or in the section regulating maximum square footage that these are, in fact, distinct things, and if it's, you know, for separate buildings, that, that would be a good clarification, just because, you know, if I didn't, you know, it might be in your brain that that's how it works, but if the code doesn't say that, someone could dispute it later.
Fair enough.
And, as Commissioner Kolkmeier's point about the ADUs parking, yeah, my read of the state law, which was a while ago, about ADUs, was that we couldn't require parking at all. That might be the legal change that Ms. Stanek noted she's working on, but, yeah, when we were talking about ADUs, it was before the state passed a statute, and, yeah, as the commissioner who did craft the compromise on the commission, that we needed the time to, you know, require parking only in some limited cases. I, I think the state law doesn't allow us to do that anymore. I, I think that should probably just go away, just so that we're in total compliance. But I, I took Ms. Stanek's hint in that direction, that that's probably where we're going. And yes, I think that was it, so, thank you.
If there are no further questions for us, we will move on from item four to item five, approval of the minutes. So we had in our packet the draft minutes from April 2nd, 2025. Did anyone have any changes? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Overall.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No one has opposed those or approved. April 9th, 2025, we have minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes as well, we approve those two. Thank you, staff, for developing those. Now, item six, here's where I tell you that on May 7th, we have a quasi-judicial proceeding that we're going to require all, I mean, not require, you're all, will happily be here, I'm sure. But this is the 777 Yaro major site plan that has been referred by the director to the full commission for a hearing that is scheduled on the 7th. We, I don't know how long that hearing will go, but there has been significant interest on that. I want to remind everyone in the commission, because it's a quasi-judicial proceeding, we're not allowed to talk to each other about it, we're not allowed to talk to the public about it, there is no ex parte communications as it relates to that. And there has been some discussion about what happens if that goes too late and we need to schedule a second date. My preference would be we go until it is done on the 7th, and part of the reason for that is that we have staff that will not be available... And part of the reason for that is that we have staff that will not be available starting on the 8th. So we would then, if we did not complete on the 7th, then we might appropriately have to wait several weeks to finish it. Is there a mood of the commission on this issue? Should we plan on trying to go till it's done? I'm getting some nods. Commissioner O'Neill.
Is there a "too late" that we're considering? I'm concerned, but I hear what you're saying.
You know, we always have the option, and Ms. Stanek will advise us, but we always do have the option, I believe, of recessing the hearing and reconvening. But I have been informed that it's going to be difficult to get some of the most knowledgeable staff there unless we then schedule it for several weeks out. Commissioner Buckley.
I will just humbly make a suggestion that we enter that hearing with the commission informed of like what the list of backup dates are in case it just gets too late and there's a motion to continue the hearing. So we just, we have that worked out. But yeah, we'll try our best and, I don't know, it's quarter to midnight, this isn't too late for me. So we'll just see how that one goes.
We'll send you a list, but right now, your backup dates, if we stick with commission dates, are June 4th, and then a special meeting on June 11th, and then June, I think it's, what's?
June 18th.
18th.
Yeah. So there's not a possibility of just the following week on, because I think it's, the 7th is calendar, the 21st is our next hearing on the zoning.
Right.
So the 14th is not an option.
And we've already had two commissioners say they're not available on the 14th.
Got it.
So that's why we don't have a calendar. And then Bria, who's the staff planner, is out for two weeks. She's had this calendar for months. So yes, we could Tuesday or Thursday, but it's still way out because of staff availability.
Got it.
And I already know that we have some conflict issues with the June 4th day already as well, which means we're probably then looking at like the 18th, right? So I think, Commissioner Buckley, your point of like, can we know what dates we could resume if we did have to recess would be helpful so that we at least can, if it's, I don't know, 4:00 in the stinking morning, we can say, okay, we got to come back to this and we know what date that would be? Yeah, I mean, I would just say like, it would be helpful to have those dates, though I agree with the chair that if we can push through, that would probably, that would definitely be the ideal outcome, I think, of that meeting.
We all must be here in person for that as well, correct?
We do. We do. So if, I don't know if it's Mr. Medina or Mr. Rice, if you want to just send us what those dates would be, but it's looking like the 4th and the 18th of June. Any further general business items or scheduling updates?
I had one more thing. Speaking of June 4th, I want to see if the staff or the commission is available to meet on June 4th. There's also the swim club subdivision that staff is thinking of bringing forward to the commission. And I did hear from one commissioner that they wouldn't be available. So if any other commissioner is unavailable, please let me know now so that we don't schedule it on that date.
I'll be unavailable.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. So...
I may be unavailable as well.
That also takes out June 4th then for a potential YARO follow-up, so I'll make a note of that. Thank you.
It is increasingly looking like we ought to finish on May 7th or 8th. With no further business coming before the commission, the Planning Commission adjourns at 11:49. Thank you all.